Councilmember Oliva.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schneider. Vice Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Mayor Holliver.
Present.
All members of the council are present.
Okay, would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Justice for all.
Okay, we are going to begin with a presentation of committee, commission and committee service pins by our vice mayor. Vice Mayor Schneider.
Okay. Hi, and thank you. And tonight, we're taking time to honor the dedication and hard work of three members of our cities committees and commissions. Milbrae is privileged to have so many people who devote time and passion to giving back to our community. Milbrae has eight commissions and committees, and combined, we have fifty-eight commissioners and committee members. From economic development to addressing, pardon me, to addressing quality of life issues for older residents. The three Milbrae citizens we are honoring tonight have shaped and devoted themselves to helping shape our communities' economic and social prosperity. Their role in our community cannot be overemphasized. It is for this service and their dedication to our community that we honor them. And I believe, and it's still the case, Angela, I can't look at the list, but we have one person Vernon Bruce is present, but Mimi Lee and Mary Ellen Pellegrini aren't present.
That is correct, Vice Mayor.
We thank all three of you, but from there then, for this service, I'd like to first honor longtime family friend Vernon Bruce, who has served on the city's Economic Vitality Advisory Committee for twenty years. During that time, he has helped guide the development of the city's economic development plan, worked with city staff and other commission and committee members to support our economic growth, and has been a great advocate for our business community. On top of that, if you have ever seen our antique train or the Milbrae Historical Society's antique train, Vern has been the person driving that, and it's been, I think every council member has had the opportunity to ride in the fire engine. So we thank you very much, Vern, for your dedication and your twenty years of service to Milbrae, and for all of the locks that you have helped change in our house and all of the safes that you have provided to our residents. You're also a dedicated Milbrae business, and thank you so much for your twenty years of service.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I think at this point, you can say more. I'm moving between screens, but what I have is a letter for you and a pin, which Angela has made sure that I have, and I will be dropping them by the store on El Camino Real.
Okay, well, thank you. All I have to say is, wasn't really prepared for a speech there, but I thank you for the honor of keeping me as long as twenty years on the committee. And I've just really enjoyed it. I've enjoyed being part of it. I was born and raised in Milbrae, and I've just always felt that Milbrae is the place on the peninsula for me anyway, so thank you very much.
Well, again, thank you so much.
Okay.
And then, even though we don't have them present with us tonight, we are also very happy to honor Mary Ellen Pellegrini, who has served on the city's Senior Advisory Committee for ten years, and Mimi Lee, who I think has a relation on city council and has served on the Senior Advisory Committee for five years. During that time, they have been great advocates for Milbrae senior citizens. They've helped ensure that our vulnerable have the resources and support they need to thrive in later years. I'm sorry, my cat has decided to serenade us. They've helped us understand the effects of the county shelter-in-place order on senior citizens and have directed important services to those in need and helped ensure that quiet voices are not overlooked or forgotten. Mary Ellen, thank you so much for your ten years of service to the city of Milbrae and all of the bingo games you and your mother-in-law have won at the senior luncheons. And Mimi Lee, thank you for your five years of service to the city and everything that you have done with self-help for the elderly. Thank you for all your service and dedication to the city and being an important part of our success. Good night.
Hey, thank you very much for that, Vice Mayor Schneider, and thank you to all of our committee and commissioners, commissioners and committee members. And congratulations, Vern, for twenty years of service. Thank you very much for your dedication to the community. And I believe you were also the, the lock shop was also the Milbrae Business of the Year, I think, in 2019, I believe. So, you know, thank you for all your service here, and congratulations on your success.
Thank you.
Yes.
If I could also say to Ms. Pellegrini and Ms. Lee, I will be bringing your letters and your ten-year pins to your house, so they should get to you within the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
Very good. All right, now we are going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a proclamation recognizing Juneteenth National Freedom Day. This honors the June nineteenth, which was when final slaves in Texas learned about the surrender of the Confederacy and the end of slavery. It's a holiday that often has been overlooked and has not really gotten a lot of media coverage. And frankly, before this year, probably a lot of people hadn't even heard of it or didn't know very much about it. But we are going to, we are honoring the memory and the celebration of Juneteenth this year. Any comments? I think there were a couple of members of the community who were interested in speaking about this.
Yes, Mayor and Council, my name is Amy Lauer, and I would love to just express a couple of reasons why I think it would be important for Milbrae to move forward and officially acknowledge and commemorate Juneteenth. I've lived in Milbrae since 2012 with my husband, Michael, who's next to me on the couch, and our four kids who have gone through Milbrae and San Mateo schools. So, yeah, it was actually, last year was the first year I'd heard of Juneteenth. And I turned to one of our children, Justin, who took APU as history at Mills High School two years ago, and I asked him if he had studied Juneteenth. And he said, "No, no, I haven't." And I said, "Well, what about the Tulsa Massakers?" "No, that wasn't covered in the class." So I thought, "Well, it's not just a matter of the textbooks that I was exposed to so many years ago. It's not just the books that I have read and the newspapers I've been exposed to. It's also, or you, who are actually, you know, this generation is very open, much more open, I think, to diversity and inclusion. It's how, especially here in the Bay Area, our children are growing up. So one of my motivations is that, you know, Juneteenth, it's from June of eighteen sixty-five, two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation, which most of us studied in school. And, you know, it's time that we think about all Americans having freedom and what that means and what freedom means to us. And because of the centuries of systems that actually kept former slaves back, if you think about the right to vote, the right to live where you want, the right to attend the school that you want to send your kids to, the right to marry the person you want, these are all freedoms that had to be fought for, and they're not that long ago, and they're not really in our textbooks. So I encourage us to think about Juneteenth as a way to enable people who live in Milbrae not only to celebrate freedoms that have been earned, but also freedoms that are still yet to come. So an educational moment, a moment to reflect and think, and also a moment to celebrate. So that's why I think we should celebrate Juneteenth here in Milbrae.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lauer, for those great words. Yeah, you know, I agree. That was something that was not in my textbook at Mills. The Tulsa massacre, I think I first learned about maybe one or two years ago, but it's just amazing how many important events in American history we don't learn and really are hidden and really, I think, need to be learned and acknowledged and both in terms of celebration, also trying to avoid things that happened in the past that, you know, we never, ever want to see happen again. Okay. Any comments from the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Lee.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Lauer and Michael. Thank you for making the time to talk about this important subject. I think it is an important time, a unique time, and it's good that nations have started to learn many things that we need to change to give everybody an opportunity to excel and also to, that hopefully people will understand that people are people and that we all, we all, like I said, bleed the same color. And even though a lot of discrimination happened, you see a lot of different minorities fight for this country, and they shed their blood. And I think we owe, we owe it to everybody to just take a little time to try to get to know somebody who's different from us and learn what it means to be different, and I think that would go a long ways. And I just thank you, Ms. Lauer and Mr. Kelly, for taking the time to speak to the council. It means a lot to me and it means a lot to a lot of citizens in Milbrae. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Schneider.
I want to thank Amy and her family and everybody else who worked on an incredibly successful march and vigil on this. I believe the resolution talks about making Juneteenth National Freedom Day. And it's my understanding, but I didn't double-check my math, that our Senator Kamala Harris, as well as several other senators, introduced a bill in Congress to start moving in that direction. This isn't an action item tonight, but I would be happy to see this come back to us as an action item supporting making Juneteenth, June tenth, National Freedom Day. It's time.
All right, Councilman Oliva.
Yes, Ms. Lauer, thank you so much for your kind words, and I wish we all were, could represent kindness in what you just said. But I just want to also say that what touched me most with what you had to say was, "It all started in the home." And I think that's so important. And if we could all reflect to our children, to our extended families that are in our home, how these acts of kindness or these recognitions of non-acts of kindness need to be alleviated from our society, I, it would be an amazing world, right? And so thank you for starting it in Milbrae, and I thank you for being part of our little community. Your, your words and your presence are very valuable.
Thank you.
All right, and Councilman Peppin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Amy, and your husband. And yes, I mean, this has been just a wonderful opportunity. The community has come together in such a beautiful way to acknowledge a not-so-pretty history that we were not there for. But the fact that many of us are just becoming knowledgeable about this and it hasn't been taught in our schools is just appalling. So bringing, we have to learn from the mistakes of the past to move forward, and this is just the beginning of that. You know, this is a country that was developed with a lot of, supposed to be the melting pot, but it's made a lot of mistakes along the way. And so hopefully, we can learn from those mistakes in the past and bringing the community together. The protests or the gathering that we all had was just wonderful and so informative and great and really shows the strength of Milbrae when we do come together. So that in and of itself was exciting, and I know other events are planned so that we can learn more about our history and hopefully never, ever repeat the mistakes of the past, move forward, take action for the positive. So looking forward to doing that and working with the entire community. So thank you, everybody. I know, Amy, the emails were going back and forth, who's going to talk tonight? Thank you for stepping up. You did a wonderful job. I saw that, who's going to talk? It's like, okay. But thank you very, very much. Look forward to working with everybody. And as we note, this is an election year, so we want to make sure everybody's counted, number one. We have a census and that everybody goes to the polls in November. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much, everyone, for your comments. Okay, let's move on to the agenda overview and staff briefing. Mr. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you and members of the city council. Tom Williams, City Manager. The agenda overview after the ceremonial presentations this evening includes our calendar of events, reports of bills and claims, a presentation by the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office on the Eight Can't Wait program. Then we have item number three, approval of meeting minutes for the regular meeting of June ninth, two thousand and twenty. Item number four then is oral reports from city commissions and committees. We have none. We have no reports this evening. Then we move into public comment, and that's any member of the public can address the city council for three minutes on any item that is not on the agenda. Then we move to the consent calendar. Item number five, consider adoption of a resolution to order a call of the general municipal election to be held on November third, two thousand and twenty. Item number six is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit to the Department of Housing and Community Development the local early action planning grant, known as a LEAP grant, in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Item number seven is to receive a file monthly general fund financial report for the period ending May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Item number eight is to adopt the organizational conflict of interest policy for design-build projects. Item number nine is to consider a resolution awarding a contract to interstate grading and paving for the Milbrae Street Rehabilitation Project that includes a large spur drive from Crestview Drive to the North End. Item number ten is to consider, and this is really an extension of a previous resolution and urgency ordinance for, to allow the temporary use of public right-of-way for outdoor dining. There are no public hearing items this evening. Then moving to existing business, item number eleven is to consider actually the design guidelines. The gen item is the temporary use of public right-of-way for outdoor dining guidelines. So item ten implements, provides an implementing legislation. Item number eleven gives detail on the design guidelines. Item number twelve is an informational report on the final draft climate action plan. Item number thirteen is an update on the Milbrae Recreation Center Restoration Project. Item number fourteen is a, is an information item on the stop sign installation at South Ashton and Sequoia Avenue. And item number fifteen is council discussion and appointment of a city council subcommittee for West Side Developments for the Milbrae Station area specific plan. Then we move to council comments. We did have a closed session this evening. I don't believe there's any report out of closed session, and then adjournment. So, Mr. Mayor, real quick, before I hand it over to Chief Kunkel on the Eight Can't Wait, just a few, few things on our report, and we will have it on the agenda this evening. We've really launched a nice program with our local business community and restaurants for outdoor dining. It's been successful as the rules and the shelter-in-place orders have loosened up. Our Milbrae Summer Camp that started two weeks ago is moving strong. So anybody out there that would like to register their children for our summer camp program, please contact our website under our Recreation Department and sign up. There are limited to twelve kids per camp, and it's a minimum of a three-week term. So so far, it's been very successful. And then I'd just like to bring to everyone's attention that we have seen a lot of trash in the city. People are actually dumping in our city trash receptacles, and more than usual, we're finding old furniture and trash being dumped on the side of the road and on city property. And so we're just asking everyone, please, if you have excess trash or need to clean out any old stuff, contact South San Francisco Scavenger. They offer two free cleanup pickups per calendar year, and it's a great opportunity to get rid, obviously, of the large bulky items. And, and please avoid not littering the city streets and city property. And then just another note, we have opened the skate park. As you know, it's been very successful and being used. And we just want to remind everybody, please follow the, the instructions on the sign, keep your distance. And when you're not skating, please protect yourself and others by wearing a mask. And with that quick update, I would now like to hand it over to Chief Kunkel for a presentation on the San Mateo County Sheriff's Department Eight Can't Wait Program.
Thank you, sir, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council, Mr. City Manager, and those in the public. My name is Paul Kunkel. I'm a captain with the Sheriff's Office, and I serve as the Chief of Police for the Milbrae Police Bureau. We're here today as a result of a very disturbing video that came out of Minneapolis. And all of us had watched it. And I will tell you, there's no one on earth who dislikes bad cops more than good cops. And the level of appalling that's happened nationally is also happening within law enforcement. And I think the public needs to know that as well. This has spurred a lot of interesting stuff throughout the country, protests, rioting. But what I like is it started a national discussion. And I want to talk a little bit about the two protests we had in Milbrae. One was on June seventh and one was on June thirteenth. The one on June seventh had about five hundred people who marched all over the city and ended up in front of City Hall and our police bureau. And there was a lot of speakers, a lot of people. And when they left, I walked outside with the city manager and didn't find one piece of trash, not one piece of graffiti. It was very impressive. I'm very proud of the people of the city of Milbrae and that getting their voices heard and doing so in a way that's reasonable and calm and well-thought-out. And it's very impressive. It speaks well for our community. The San Mateo County Sheriff's Office is probably one of the most diverse law enforcement agencies in the country. The Milbrae Police Bureau is one of the smallest bureaus in operations. We don't have many folks here. And even in our small bureau, we speak a number of languages and are from a number of countries. I'm kind of a mixed-race guy. I'm Puerto Rican, German, Irish. I speak Spanish, and there's a number of Spanish speakers here. We also speak Mandarin, Cantonese, Hungarian, Tagalog, a little bit of Gaelic. And until recently, we had a Tongan speaker who just got promoted. If you ever want to see a really neat, diverse event, come to a sheriff's swearing-in for anything, for new officers, for promotions, it's really a neat event, and you'll see people from all walks of life, from all over the world, frankly, who come to serve the communities in San Mateo County. A big thing before I get into the Eight Can't Wait stuff, I want to talk a little bit about mental health because it's a huge component about what's going on throughout the country. All of your deputies in the Milbrae Police Bureau are CIT-trained. That's Critical Incident Training, where they get to deal with, they learn how to deal with the mentally ill. We also have access to a sheriff's PERC team. It's the Psychological Emergency Response Team, who can come out to us. They came out to us thirty-four times in the last year to treat our eighty-nine, fifty-one-fifties. We've had a large, a pretty decent increase in mental health issues since COVID because people are kind of stuck at home and problems get a little bit exacerbated. And we take mental health stuff very seriously. But mental health isn't the only issue. A lot of times with folks, you have to peel back the onion of addiction before you deal with mental health. I think we, as deputy sheriffs, have a really, kind of a leg up on that because all of us cycle through corrections. All of us work in the jail, and all of us have to deal with folks who come in and kind of the worst start state of their life and try to help rebuild them to get them out. And that's where we really learn de-escalation. That's where we learn to talk to people. Because in jails, we don't have weapons. We don't have any things we have on the street. So mental health is a big deal with us. It's a big deal to me personally. I helped lead the charge with a number of other people, the Sheriff's Office, and Corrections, to found our behavioral health pods that treat the mentally ill. And now, now that we're doing that, we have an acute services unit for the acute and subacute mentally ill, where we can get the medication quickly. I'm very passionate about mental health. I volunteer. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Mental Health Association of San Mateo County. We house the chronically homeless mentally ill. It's a fantastic organization. And as we go forward, the Sheriff's Office really has poured a ton of money into not only training the deputy sheriffs and the professional staff, but to providing resources to the mentally ill, working with BHRS and other resources in the county. We are absolutely an open book here. The San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, if you go to smcsheriff.com, smcsheriff.com, and you can find all of our policies. All of our policies are online. All the rules we have to abide by, all of our procedures, they're right there on the online resources. You click down, you get all of them. Now, it's about seven hundred pages of rules, but it's pretty comprehensive, and you'll get a really good idea of what we do, how we do it. I'd like to get into the Eight Can't Wait. I'm going to start a little bit with a letter from Sheriff Alanos, and I want to highlight some stuff that he talks about that are super important to me as an operations commander. We train our deputies in fair and impartial policing, implicit bias, responding to hate crimes, crisis intervention, communications, cultural diversity and racial profiling. In addition, we practice de-escalation and represents a critical component of our arrest control and defensive tactics training. We are a, a very well-trained organization. The deputy sheriffs we put out into the communities are very well-trained. We're really kind of leading the forefront of a lot of this on the implicit bias training and impartial, fair and impartial policing. We flew out an expert from Florida who trained not only our deputy sheriffs on the street, but they started with the executive staff. The sheriff was in the class with me, as were all the assistant sheriffs, under sheriffs, and all the captains who run the big bureaus for the Sheriff's Office, because leadership starts at the top. We got the training first, and then it went down through the ranks to the deputy sheriffs on the street. So I want to start with the Eight Can't Wait. It's a program that was emailed, I think, to pretty much every police department in the country. The idea behind this, I know I've struggled with their website. I've gone on their website from a bunch of different places, at home, at work, on a bunch of different devices. I can't really get it to load properly. The assertion is if the law enforcement agency does these eight things, there's a seventy-two percent lower use of force rate. And there's a study supposedly on there. I've clicked on it. I can't get to it. I'm sure it exists. I just haven't personally seen it. The Sheriff's Office wanted to get ahead of this to show the community what we do and kind of talked about the why. And we want to forward and put this out throughout our entire bureaus. If you want a copy of this, it's on our website, and it's also on our Facebook. That's facebook slash smcsheriff. So there were eight things they wanted to address. Bands, they wanted to ban chokeholds, strangleholds, required de-escalation, require warnings before shooting, require exhaust, requires exhaust all alternatives, alternatives, excuse me, before shooting, a duty to intervene, ban shooting of moving vehicles, utilize use of force continuum, and require comprehensive reporting. So we're going to talk about each of those. So we're going to the force, the first one, the banning of chokeholds and strangleholds. Those are kind of colloquialisms. We don't choke anyone. We don't strangle anybody. We did use the carotid restraint. We had it in our use of force continuum. It has now been taken out as of June eighth. It's forbidden to be used by deputy sheriffs. I will tell you, it's something we haven't done in years. All uses of force to Sheriff's Office are reported, have to go through a chain of command. I've been part of that leadership since about two thousand and nine when I promoted to sergeant. And I've worked both jails. I've worked a number of assignments. I've reviewed a number of uses of force, and, and the eleven years I've been in leadership, I've never reviewed a carotid restraint use. So we haven't used it, I think, in some time, so it's a pretty easy one for us to get rid of, and we no longer do it. The governor put something out through post, which is police officer standards and training, forbidding it, and we, along with the rest of the state, no longer will do carotid restraints. The next one requires de-escalation. All right. No, we gotta go. I'm sorry. When I get there, so everyone can see it. All right. And you can see what it says on there. "All deputies and correctional officers are trained on de-escalation tactics, crisis intervention tactics, and advanced crisis intervention training." Essentially, the idea behind de-escalation is we want to calm the situation down. Now, that can't always be done, depending on the person's mental status, whether they're under the influence of drugs or alcohol. I think this is where the jails are really good for us because we learn to talk to people under duress. It's very rare you'll find a deputy sheriff yelling at anybody because we've learned very young. The louder I yell, the louder you're going to yell. It makes much more sense to calmly talk to people, and that doesn't work with everybody. But we're very good at de-escalating things. Now, the, and the requirement about it, I don't know, I'm kind of perplexed by this. We do this all the time on all the time on all of our calls. De-escalation doesn't always work. It sounds fantastic. But I would, as an example, like, think of the people you love most in the world, your spouse, your children. You know, when you're fighting with them and when you're in the heat of the moment, everybody's angry. There's no phrase or set of phrases that are going to suddenly make everyone calm down and be rational. So this isn't a magic pill. This isn't, you know, it's a great tool, but it's not an end-all. We are very good at it. We use it all the time. It's very successful in criminal activity, dealing with mental health things, or even just talking to the regular public. People don't call us because things are great. Generally, they call us because they're upset. And it's nice to use this and we at the Sheriff's Office use it all the time. We train on it. And I think, in my opinion, we're very good at it. The next one requires warning before shooting. The Sheriff's Office trains its employees when feasible to provide a verbal warning, an opportunity to comply prior to the use of OC pepper spray, projectile systems, batons, tear gas, specialty impact munitions, canine, the taser and the firearm. Requiring a warning. Again, with this, it's a should thing for us because we recognize that there are times that you may not have time to do that. Or someone may be in the act of committing an awful crime or a violent act that you need to stop right now. But generally, under the huge majority of situations, we're going to be able to, you know, stop or I'll do this. None of us want to hurt anybody here. We all got in this business to help people. We carry a lot of tools, but those tools are to gain compliance and not to hurt people. And we don't want to do that. So the hope is that, hey, we're going to case you or, you know, we're going to pepper spray you or whatever it is. Well, dissuade you enough to comply. But that always doesn't work either sadly. So we generally try and we train at it endlessly, all of our range training, all of our training on all the different tools we use to get people to comply. Have a component where you give verbal commands. We teach those in different languages. We teach them in Spanish from time to time. Because again, the idea is we want to get compliance without the use of these things. But I think warnings are important. We don't require them, but when feasible, we absolutely encourage them. The next one we have is requires exhaust all alternatives before shooting. This is something I can say we absolutely do. Nobody wants to shoot anybody. So we all got into this to help people and all of us carry a lifetime of physical and psychological scars that we carry from the things we do and see in this business. None of us want to hurt anybody and we all know people who've had to do that kind of thing. And it affects them and their families for the rest of their lives as well. Always a tragic situation, never anything we want to do. We always try to exhaust everything we can before we get to shooting. Now, sometimes there's not time for that. Sometimes there's not time to try the less lethal options or some other things. And sometimes if you come somewhere and you're immediately under fire, you've got no choice. But this is something we absolutely try to do as exhaust all of our alternatives before we shoot anybody. Duty to intervene. What is a duty to intervene? This essentially is that if a deputy sheriff is doing something and you see it and they're using force, it's inappropriate. They're acting inappropriately or being discriminatory or whatever it is, it is your duty as a deputy sheriff to step in and correct that activity and to report it. And we have done this for quite some time. I'm very proud of this. We're very good at this. This doesn't happen a lot. As I said, we have a really stringent hiring process. It's hard to get hired as a deputy. And the people we hire, especially in this era and this area, tend to be highly educated and really duty-driven folks. But we do have a duty to intervene. And if you fail to intervene and you get caught, you also can be subject to disciplinary discipline. The next one, ban shooting and moving vehicles. We do not have a complete ban on shooting vehicles. Generally speaking, it's not a great idea. It's not a terribly effective tactic a lot of times. But we do recognize that there are things that happen across the country that may require us to return fire to moving vehicle. The terrorist attacks in San Bernardino come to mind, but there was a running gun battle with terrorists on the freeway. We don't ever want to put ourselves in the position to where we absolutely can't do something or drive by shooting where I can't return fire on somebody endangering myself and the community is further endangered because we can't stop the threat. But we absolutely, it's a last kind of last ditch effort and you have to really be able to explain what we're doing and why you're doing it. And the policy is pretty clear. We should only discharge a firearm at a moving vehicle if it's occupant or its occupants, if the deputy reasonably believes there are no other reasonable means to avert the threat of the vehicle, or if deadly force other than the vehicle is directed at the deputy or others. Deputy should not shoot at any part of the vehicle and attempt to disable the vehicle. That's important too. The days of shooting out tires are from movies in the seventies. We don't do that. We don't shoot at the engine block to try to disable it. Absolutely not. Deputy shall not discharge a firearm from his moving vehicle, his or her moving vehicle, sorry. Deputy should move out of the path of an approaching vehicle instead of discharging your firearm at a vehicle or any of its occupants. And that's an interesting one as well. We don't want to create our own exigency by saying the car was driving at us so I can move out of the way. Which, yeah, I shot the person because they were driving at us when I can, if I can move away. So very rare, I can think of one event and like 25 years as a cop that a moving vehicle has been shot at. But I do think it's important that we talk about it and plan for it. Utilize the use of force continuum. We do this all the time. And this is on every call. And you can go from one thing to the other. You can go from the least serious to the most serious. There's not like a step, like, well, gee, to get to step F, I have to go through A through D. No, you can kind of play around with it. As far as if I get there and suddenly you're coming at me with a knife, I can go right to taser or gun. Or, you know, and then if maybe I, you have the knife and I pull the gun out and you decide, okay, you know what, hey, I'll drop the knife. Then I go back to a lower level of any kind of force I would use against you. The idea is we want to have some flexibility in what we use and be reasonable. So we're not locked into if this, then that. We, again, we took a lot of effort into hiring and training these folks and we trust their judgment. And we also understand that it's kind of a fluid deal out there. Sometimes you're alone, sometimes helps a long way away. You have to have the ability to go from maybe giving commands to using a higher level of force, but you also have to have the ability to go right back to a lower level of force once that's done. So we've done that for years. And requires comprehensive reporting. We are absolutely comprehensive reporting. California is fantastic for that. Anytime there's an officer involved, critical incident, typically there's three investigations that go on. There's the investigation into the initial crime. So if there's a shooting at a bank robbery, we still have to investigate the bank robbery and the crime that led to the shooting. There's a investigation into the officers and their behavior and a criminal review done by that. There's also an Internal Affairs Investigation done inside by the Sheriff's Office. Now, one of the great things that San Mateo County does is we have an officer-involved, a critical incident team that's run out of the District Attorney's Office and made up of detectives from all over the county. And it's nice because you get a nice, fair outside assessment at what happened and what's going on. That way, there's no internal pressure that, hey, this is our guy. We got to take care of him. Absolutely not. We want a good, fair, honest opinion of what happened. That way, if there are things that need to be done, if there's discipline that needs to be meted out, if there's training that needs to be done, or if it just went fine, we want to know. But we also want to be completely transparent and open and have other folks take a look at what we're doing and why. So that kind of covers the eight can't wait and I'll be, I'll take questions in just a second. I want to close with something positive. I know we've had a lot of interesting stuff that hasn't been terribly positive with law enforcement lately. But I'm very excited tomorrow at 9:00 AM with the Sheriff's Command Staff Meeting. I'll be, the Sheriff Alanos and I will be giving Deputy Manila, who's one of our Millbrae Police Bureau deputies, the Medal of Valor for his activity, his glorious actions in saving five people on April 27th at the Hemlock Fire. Because of COVID, that's kind of a closed deal. His wife can't even go. She has to watch via Teams. But it's very important to the sheriff that we reward good work and we'll be doing that tomorrow morning. And I'll talk to the city manager. We'll probably do something nice from the city once we could all get together and do something in person, hopefully once COVID ends. And that's all I have. And I'm ready for any questions.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that presentation, Chief Kunkel. It's good to know that our department has been pretty proactive about these best practices and not just reactive. Looks like we have several hands up. Councilman Lee. Councilman Lee.
The sticky unmute button.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll let Vice Mayor Snyder go before me.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman. Chief Kunkel, thank you so much and thank you for helping us have basically a perfect march and vigil that day. It was truly good. I've done a number of protests in my life and it sounds really strange, but most of the time they're really, you really feel good. You're with people, working on an issue and and it's a positive thing. And that was exactly that day. I have one question for you and I thank you for the presentation. I have two questions. One, can you explain especially to our public about community policing? And how community policing can assist?
Community policing is really important to us. It's a big thrust all over the Sheriff's Office, even in Corrections, frankly. Sheriff Alanos is really big on it. And essentially, it's, we want to serve the communities like we live there. So it's getting out and not just patrolling and being there for bad things, but getting out and talking to people, going to events, integrating with the schools and the kids, stopping and talking to people, meeting the business folks, going to the number of meetings that we're invited to and not just kind of blowing people off. We want to build a relationship with the community and the sheriff talks about that in his letter. That's what we do at all of our bureaus is we build relationships with the city. And we do that by getting together and talking. Sometimes that talk's uncomfortable. Sometimes we don't agree and that's fine. Reasonable people can disagree and that's how we grow, frankly. But we do that by actually getting out and talking to each other. And that's one of the reasons I love the Sheriff's Office so much. I come from a smaller PD and I think we do a really good job at it. We have a variety, we have, gosh, we have Charon, we have Sal, we have a number of outreach groups within the Sheriff's Office who do things that have nothing to do with law enforcement, other than building the relationships with the community. I mean, you know, the PERT team is, that's not really a law enforcement function, but that's fantastic because not only do they help the person who's having mental problems, they deal with the family, they help get resources, they do all this really neat stuff to help the community. Because again, that's why we all got it is to help people. And the community policing part is important to meet folks, to talk to folks. Most people, frankly, what they know about the police, they know from TV and the movies. And it's radically incorrect. And it's nice to be able to talk to folks and take down the barrier of fear and take down the barrier of nervousness. Anyway, my name's Paul. You know, come on, let's just talk like people. And it works out much better. And I think our guys are good at it. And we really stress it in all of our police bureaus, not just here in Millbrae, but all the other ones, all over the Sheriff's Office and I'm a huge fan and we're going to continue to do it, especially here in Millbrae.
My other question, and I apologize to the public, my computer is being moved to a new computer. So I've been basically offline most of today. So if this question came up, but I know that a number of young people and young adults talked about the school officers. So I don't want to steal the thunder because I think the question will come from the public, but if you can hang on to that and let the public ask, but a question, clarification of just what a school resource officer does and does not do.
Okay, our school resource, I don't run our school resource unit. That's actually run by Captain Christina Corpus out of our headquarters patrol bureau. We have deputy sheriffs assigned to most of our schools. Now, they're not there all day, every day. They're not there to police the kids. It's essentially an outreach program. The idea being, one, we want to build relationships with the kids in the schools.
You froze. Chief, would you mind re-saying that? You froze a little bit.
I'm sorry. The idea isn't to police the schools. The idea is to build bridges and build relationships with the community and the kids. We want to teach them that, hey, we're not really how we're portrayed on television. We want to build relationships. We want to work with you as things come up before they become police matters. Because sometimes there's behavior problems in schools that, you know, the schools before felt compelled to call us with, and like, I don't want to make a kid a criminal. I want to help them out and get them back on the right path. It's really good for relationship building. It's really good because with, because they work very closely with our Sheriff's Activity League. So it gets activities into the schools for sports and homework and a bunch of other stuff. That's all free that the school district does not pay for. The sheriff actually provides that. So the city doesn't pay for it, the school district doesn't pay for it, the Sheriff's Office provides it. It's great for preparation. A lot of bad things happen at schools across the country. We are very well-prepared for that. We train it endlessly. And it's nice to have the school resource people there because I think sometimes having that deterrent there is helpful if someone is tempted to do something nefarious. But it's been a very successful program all over the county. I'm a huge fan of it. I worked very closely with our school district. And to a lesser extent with the high school district, but with the, the school district and the grade school and junior high district. Big fans of our school district and it's really nice to work with them. And we get to do things like bike rodeos and other fun stuff to it's good for the community. It's good for us. It's good for them. We integrate our partners in fire. And everyone gets to kind of come out and learn about each other and get familiar with each other. It's a great tool for community policing.
And I am very thankful for those projects, Chief. That's how I get to know you and all of your deputies. We have an amazing team and I thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We also have a guest with us, Ms. Nolan Stivoe.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much to the council members and Chief Kunkel for allowing me to speak about some of the community support for the eight can't wait movement. And before we got started tonight, Vice Mayor Schneider asked if there were people who were involved in the Black Lives Matter movement here in Millbrae who would be addressing you. And so I am one of those people. I was at both of those marches. I thought it was fantastic. But I think the reason for those marches still remains true that we read too often about encounters with the police that escalate into dramatic and deadly incidents. And Millbrae is not immune here. So while I appreciate all of the things that you said, Chief Kunkel, and walking through the eight can't wait, I think it is useful to remember what happened to Chinadu Okobi, who was a black man walking down the street. Let's let that sink in. A black man walking down the street who, as far as I can tell, from what's publicly available, was having a mental crisis and whose only crime appears to have been jaywalking, who was tased to death on El Camino. I care probably as much, if not more than you, about mental illness with my family history. The first officer on the scene, if he, he or she was worried about the mental health of this individual, should have reached out to those organizations that you mentioned that support mental health and people in crisis, not call for backup. I think we all are saddened by the loss of this individual in this community, but that shines a light on the practices that even with the eight can't wait things that we believe the county is doing well, there is room for improvement. That, and I think the other thing that the eight can't wait movement is trying to achieve, and you pointed out this, but I'll say it more pointedly. Law enforcement in Millbrae should be focused on crime. Social ills like mental illness, homelessness, other concerns that we have should be dealt with by other folks and doing so probably would lessen those encounters that we read about. So it's not about denigrating the police. It's about allocating those responsibilities in a way that is better for the community overall. And so why I'm thrilled that the sheriff sent out that letter on June 8th about how now we're compliant. Now, as of June 8th, we stopped that carotid hold. We want more from our, from our sheriff's department. And I know that's hard. You're, you're, you're constrained, but what we really want to see as a community is that you're living these principles, that, that every officer goes above and beyond, right, is really a beacon for the community. So that if the officer goes to the school and is playing soccer with the kids or doing the bike rodeo, it's really a positive experience, no matter what the racial or ethnic background of that child is. So I think what we really, what this movement really is about is starting to talk about what police departments should do and what police departments shouldn't do. And so while I'm thrilled that you are committed to de-escalation, it also shocks me a little bit to learn that you view the training that you get when you pass through the correction system as something that helps people people on the streets deal with people who are not in the correction system. It's, it's great that there is that sort of training in that environment, but it's very different for people walking down the street. And so I think we need to make sure that officers really understand what de-escalation means and whether that person really is a danger to themselves or the community. You know, is, is law enforcement the proper? You know, is is law enforcement the proper um, vehicle to address the the problem in front of you? And I think the fact that Chinadu Okobi isn't with us highlights how important this is to the community. Um, and I think along with that incident, right, in retrospect, I'm sure all of those officers, I would hope are appalled at what happened. I'm, jaywalking? No one should ever be tased for jaywalking. Like, that shouldn't be even on someone's radar. So I think there are things that we could improve on. Um, and that everybody would feel better if our law enforcement did. And so I think the other thing that goes along with this is sort of, you know, the levels of force that get asserted. So the letter was really brief on this point, that just officers will not employ a more forceful measure unless it is determined that a lower level of force would not be adequate. I think it has to be clear, there are some situations where escalating force just shouldn't be on the table. I get it that there are, yeah, jaywalking, I'm sorry. People jaywalk all the time, right? No one should be tased ever for jaywalking. My husband is from Belgium. And in his country, if an officer fires a gun, there's paperwork for days. So I think there, right, which, yeah, you're, I see your your reaction. It's, it's shocking, but it has an effect. If you know that if you take your gun out, if you point it at a citizen at someone walking down the street, you're going to be entangled in red tape for days. You're not necessarily going to reach for it unless you truly feel threatened. And I think what perhaps our law enforcement thinks is threatening situation is is a little bit more high tension than what it it could be. And finally, um,
Okay, Ms. Nolan Stavoe, I apologize, but we have a time limit typically.
Can I say one thing? I I I'm
Very briefly, but we did, we do need to move on.
I welcome this dialogue. I think this is in the first step. And I think the community as a whole really wants to see what we can do together. So thank you. And I'm sorry I went over, Mayor Oliver.
Thank you. Sorry about that. We weren't really prepared for this, but thank you. Um, okay. Um, let's see, council, uh, City Manager Williams, did you have a comment as well?
I did not have a comment, uh, but I do have one other unrelated item to report to the council after this item.
Okay, sure. Let's let's hear it.
Oh. Do you want me, is it my turn?
Oh, sorry. I thought I thought you were no longer.
No, no, I I just, I I just changed the order. Um, yes.
Okay, Chief, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, chief, you know, your job is difficult. Your officers are doing a very difficult job and making life and deaths uh decisions for the safety of our community. And we really much appreciate that. We uh, if anything, if anything I say is not meant as a criticism or or um, a critique. So, but we do, we do appreciate the extra effort you've been making and and police officers. Uh, I I do agree that uh, it's a last caller that you are overburdened with a lot of decisions. Uh, you have to be a healthcare worker, a homeless advocate. And and you wear many hats. But at the same time, I I do believe that you do have to understand if somebody's going through a mental health issue. So I do think that you need that training. And I've I've had other council members who are mental health experts feel that the police need that training to understand when they're dealing with somebody who has a mental issue and how to handle that. And so it's tragic what happened. And I understand that the police felt that that was the only way to safely bring that person down without injuring more police officers. Uh, and it was a very tragic incident all around. And I and I know I know the sheriffs and and I and the supervisors have have been addressing that issue. One of my questions is that if somebody doesn't have a gun and not presenting a gun, is there a protocol, is that a protocol to call to shoot somebody? Or must they, must they have to have a gun or is a knife even something to, you know, that'd be a threat to a police officer? Um, and also before you answer that question, also want to thank you for helping the community set up neighborhood watch programs. The neighborhood watch programs are a very important uh tool to help neighbors to help neighbors prevent crime. And and it's it's worked twice in my neighborhood. My neighbor reported crime and those people were, I mean, the sheriffs brought the helicopter out and everything and they caught the uh, the perpetrators. So thank you for doing that. And also, we hopefully can speak a little bit about the um, the like, the cam, any cameras that you suggest we should put in and um, any license plate readers or anything like that, technology we can use to deter uh bad elements from coming into the city. Thank you.
All right, well, I'll start with the use of force part. Um, that is going to always be at the the deputy level. So the deputy on scene, how they perceive the threat. So there doesn't necessarily have to be a weapon, per se, a knife or a gun. You know, if the person is significantly larger than the deputy, if they're alone or helps far away, there's a million different things that factor into the deputy's decision on what level of force to use. Uh, we always want them to use the lowest level of force possible. Things escalate quickly sometimes. Uh, they also can de-escalate quickly. So there's no if and with us, like, well, gee, you have to have a weapon or something like that, too, for me to pull out a gun. Or you're going to get tased if you do this, or you're going to get pepper sprayed, or we're going to use a canine to apprehend you, or any of their, like, less lethal tools we have. That's got to go to the deputy's state of mind at the exact time, the circumstances of it, and what was going on. And that deputy's going to have to be responsible for that. They're going to have to explain why they did what they did. And to Katie's point, anytime we use force, even low level force, there is a ton of paperwork, and there should be. The public gives us a ton of trust. And if we're going to be out using force, we should be transparent to them and we should be accountable to them. So, and when you use force inappropriately, I've been part of investigations where people have used it appropriately, where they've been disciplined, where they've been terminated. We've presented cases to the district attorney. This is a human endeavor. But it's very important for us to stay completely transparent, completely above board, and really take a good solid look at what we're doing. I think we do a good job. Are we perfect? Absolutely not. Can we get better? Absolutely. And I think that's the joy of having this kind of conversation. Is because it's opening us to getting better. As far as uh, technology, I'm a huge fan of cameras. I can't, because I'm of my position, I can't endorse a particular type of camera or a brand. But cameras at the house are fantastic. They're very helpful to us. Uh, they're very helpful when you're, something happens to a neighbor. We encourage people to call nine one one when they think they should call nine one one. A lot of times, people, they see something that's out of the ordinary, like, well, should I call? And they call their friend or their neighbor. And by the time they actually call us, an hour's gone by. If you think you should call us, call us and we'll send someone up to talk to whoever needs to be talked to. I like security systems. I like alarm systems. Some of those get expensive. But cameras are fantastic and they're really, really helpful for solving crime. And I don't want to pass by Katie's point uh about Mr. Okobi. But I want to be really clear. Uh, we're still pending litigation on that. So I have respect for the Okobi family as they go through that process. And I have respect for the sheriff's office. I can't talk about that just yet. Uh, I can talk about themes, uh, but I can't talk directly about that incident. So I just want to be clear with everyone. I apologize. I know it's been a long time. At some point, that'll it'll be done. But at this point, I can't broach that because it'll, again, I don't want to violate any of the rights or the, I want to respect the Okobi family as they go through this and the county as well. And I'm sure they'll, I'm not part of that, but I don't want to say things or do things that muddy the water with that.
Now, does the sheriff's department also have access to healthcare experts and homeless advisors?
We do. So uh, we work with a bunch of, we we work with, uh, gosh, there are transit police that I also command. And and our area, we're working with Life Moves. Uh, we have close ties with the HSA and so the Human Services Agency for the county and Behavioral Health and Recovery Services to give people services. We have a growing homeless problem in our city. A lot of those people have mental health issues. And job one is to try to get them services, to get them housing. I mean, I was just walking the campus today of City Hall with one of my sergeants. And we came across a person. And the first thing my sergeant did was offer services. Hey, have you talked about this? Have you been here? Have you done this? So there's a real concerted effort to get people into some kind of housing or get them towards where they could get uh treatment. It's a difficult one because we can't force anyone to do anything. And a lot of people are very resistant to it. That's why I like Life Moves because they kind of go out by on their own sometimes. Actually, often I think is that's their model is they go out without us. Because sometimes the uniform portrays a different purpose when we arrive at something, as opposed to having just someone there to help. But we're in close contact with those kind of groups. We work really well with them and we're making a concerted effort to deal with some of our problems using those different resources. Okay, uh, one final comment from Councilman Leva, and then we will be moving on.
Thank you, Mayor. So Katie, I just want to say thank you very much for bringing this uh to our council meeting. And it was done with a a huge amount of respect, and I appreciate that very, very much. No life or anybody's death should ever go unnoticed. And um, you 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 brought it to our attention and I appreciate that. And chief, while we, you know, you, the successes that we have in Millbrae with what what you've done, especially since you've become chief are great. And while we should celebrate all that, we do, of course, need to acknowledge that we always have a need for perfection. And I appreciate for you um, bringing that to our attention as as you did. Um, I think most of the, I know all my colleagues on council and for most of the public know that I've had, I have had a very personal experience with somebody that's been dealing with mental health issues and homelessness. And uh, it's, it's an immense, immense problem that no one person has an answer to. It takes a team. And it's going to take a team like Katie and our chief and us to do something about it. And I know that our city council has put together a subcommittee that has worked with Life Moves and 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 we are trying to to facilitate these poor homeless mental health issues that land in Millbrae that hopefully don't jaywalk down the street or don't put our police into a position where they feel unsafe. So um, I I'm very grateful and I can, I can celebrate the chief's successes. I'm on the Sal board. Thank you to our council. And I know how they are trying to build the relationships and I know how important it is. And I know that um, in these times where we're in a pandemic, where, you know, we haven't been able to fundraise and 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 make money for these activities and such, that it's really important. It's so important that we have people that are marching in our streets after another situation that could be avoided with celebrating more successes of our police department. So Katie, keep your story going because they are not perfect. And chief, please, continue to do the good work and get rid of those bad people that you have, like every other industry has. It's not allowable and it will not be tolerated. And you know, council, we need to help the people that land in Millbrae that are landing in abundance. We need to do something about that. So we're all going to roll up our sleeves. We're going to work this as a team. And we're going to do it peacefully. And I think that the way this was presented was at the utmost respect of all that care. And I thank you all.
All right, um, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Papen, or the only one who has not had an opportunity to comment yet, so we'll take your comment and then move on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, chief, for your willingness to continue the conversation with all of us. Um, a learning experience, I think we've all come to appreciate. And um, we can all take advantage of uh the possibilities to get better. And we really appreciate what the sheriff's office has done along those lines. Uh, equity, justice, and just compassion take a lot of work from all parties. And we look forward to working with you along those lines. It's beautiful and how the community has come together here. And we do want people to know, get to know your neighbors. And if you see something, you call nine one one. Yes. We want to encourage public safety as well. But it's an ongoing discussion that I think has already made great steps in the right direction, and we have a long way to go. So I want to thank the community. I want to thank the sheriff's department as well. We still can all get better and um, look forward to the ongoing conversations. So thank you for all the hard work the men and women, the sheriff's department have done. And we look forward to really um, working with you in the future and making the community better as a whole. So thank you very much.
Okay, thanks very much. All right, let's move on to the approval of minutes. Uh, we have uh one meeting. Uh, yes, Mr. Williams?
Right, if if I may, I just have one more important comment that I'd like to make as
Very quickly.
So I apologize. Just just real quick, um, I received a letter from South City Scavengers in the middle of May. Uh, they had submitted for a rate increase per their agreement back the end of March. And uh, the company has decided due to the COVID nineteen pandemic to withdraw their rate increase, uh, which would have been a two point oh four percent increase pursuant to the agreement effective July first of this year. They've rescinded that and will keep the rates flat and not consider an increase until at least October first of twenty twenty. So I wanted to make that presentation. We'll put the letter up on our website for the public uh, so they can all have access to it and see it. So uh, I wanted to just mention that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, let's go to the approval of minutes for the June ninth, twenty twenty meeting. Uh, do we have a motion?
There, I have a, I have a change.
Okay, let's hear it.
A discussion about the um, we, yeah, discussion about the um, closing the lots for um, for restaurants. There was a part where he talked about um, there was a part where it says, I think it's out of order. It's just a lot of context where it says, uh,
I know what page, what?
Um, I think it's on page, I'm sorry. Comment, resume, um, page, yeah, page eight. So um, and it's, and the public comment, and then two paragraphs down from there. Councilman, Councilmember Lee inquired as to where the farmer's market is going to go. Um, I think that sentence is misplaced. It should have gone, it was the question after a statement about closing the um, some uh, part of the lots. And there was inquiry about where the farmers, or if the farmer's market, in the context of where the, if they're going to move to farmer's market.
So so what's your recommendation?
It's kind of, it's disjointed, so.
So how do you suggest we, it is amended?
Uh, well, I was just saying, take that, you can either take that sentence out or you can put it, um, you can put that.
The first sentence of that paragraph?
No, it would be the second sentence of the paragraph. You would remove that.
Mayor Holliver stated that this needs to
No, no. Councilmember Lee inquired where the farmer's market.
Oh, okay.
So you could, you can, it should be, it should be Councilmember Lee inquired as to where the farmer's market is going to go after after staff uh, in in reference to staff's uh, statement about the uh, about the parking lot being used for um, restaurant dining.
Okay.
And then I'll move for approval of the minutes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I submitted a change as well.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I spoke to Angela earlier today. There were five little words missed. They were not they didn't change the the meaning of it. Well, they did, but they were missing words in there. Angela has them already, but they really don't change the form.
Okay. There's three different changes here. Let's just bring it back at the next meeting with uh, with a redlined copy incorporating um, the
As you wish.
And Councilmember Papen? Um, I, I didn't get your change. If you wouldn't If you wouldn't mind sending that to me, I don't recall seeing it. So if you would send that to me, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. I sent it to the mayor and the city manager. I will gladly forward it. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Councilmember, you can submit your change in writing as well.
Okay.
And then we'll bring back a redlined version at the next meeting. Okay, so moving on to item, I remember before there's no oral report from committee, commission, committee or commission chair. So let's move to public communication. The opportunity for members of the public to speak on items not appearing on the agenda. We have public comments received through email. I think we're going to be moving to a different format after this meeting for future meetings. But do we have any public comments received, Ms. Lewis, for items not on this agenda?
Yes, we have one item of public communication and I'll go ahead and read that into the record here.
Okay.
This is from Jean Wong. I have noticed that many cars now park on the wrong side of a two-way street facing oncoming traffic. It is against the law to do this in California. Millbrae should be enforcing this law as such illegal parking is a public safety hazard. This is particularly true in many neighborhoods as the streets are so narrow. I rarely saw this type of inconsiderate behavior in the past, but I believe that drivers have been emboldened to park illegally because Millbrae has not been enforcing the no wrong side parking law. Millbrae should follow Sam Bruno's example and start a campaign to remind residents that wrong side street parking is illegal and that violators will be cited. Thank you for your consideration. Jean Wong, Millbrae Highlands. And that concludes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lewis. All right, let's move on to the consent calendar. We have six items this evening, items five through 10.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, essentially.
I'd like to suggest we pull number 10 out and just combine it with number 11.
Combine it with 11? Okay, that's a good idea.
And I move to approve items five through nine.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? This is Ross Motta, manager.
Yes.
I just have one typo to correct on item number six. The amount for the, that the city of Millbrae qualifies for is 150,000, not 160. Just want to make that correction.
You lost $100,000?
10,000.
Oh, 10,000.
That's 10,000, okay. You have to make some budget.
$10,000 is still 10,000.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so we have items five through nine with the amendment on item six. We have a motion from Councilman Lee and a second from Vice Mayor Schneider. We have a roll call vote, please.
Hey, Councilmember Lee?
He's frozen.
Yep. All right, let's try. Councilmember Lee? All right, we'll continue with roll call and then I will hopefully go back and get Councilmember Lee. So Councilmember Papen?
Aye.
Councilmember Oliva?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schneider?
Aye.
Mayor Hollibur?
Aye.
And Councilmember Lee, are you with us again?
Maybe he could wave his hand or raise hand as a yes.
I think he's not in the, is it not in the? Just connected, I guess.
Okay. Well. Then I'll go ahead and the, the motion does pass with a vote of four to zero to, I guess, one, we would say. I don't believe he abstained, but it did pass by a vote of four.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, let's move on now to items 10 and 11. We'll take these combined. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Kielin Public Works Director. Tom, can I share a screen? So good evening, Mayor. Member of Millbrae City Council, Kielin Public Works Director. Tonight, we will be reviewing design guidelines for outdoor dining since we are moving one of the consent items to these existing businesses. I wanted to talk about the urgency orders and the resolution adopted on June 9th, 2020 council meeting. So tonight, we are extending the urgency orders to help our downtown business restaurants go into this difficult time. So tonight, I wanted to share some of these I got with, with the council.
I'm sorry, Katie, can you make it a full screen, please?
Yes, I can. There you go. So the objective tonight, we want to create outdoor dining spaces that meet safety and also American with disability act requirement. At the same time, we also need to help restaurants maintain those social distancing and also some safety health protocol established by San Mateo County Health Officer. So a little background, on March 17th of this year, shelter in place order was put in place in San Mateo. So the city immediately followed to with the shelter in place protocol and shut down City Hall on this, actually on March 16th, that Monday. So on June 4th, about two, a little two months after that, we were notified by San Mateo County that our restaurant can open for outdoor dining on June 4th. So that was on the Thursday afternoon and we were notified that, in fact, if that same week on Saturday, our restaurant that liked to serve their customers outdoor can do so. So immediately we created a little subcommittee, we sprung into action, we walked downtown, we talked with, we talked to a bunch of businesses advising them about the possibility of outdoor dining. So on that June 6th, a couple restaurants submitted an application to do, begin outdoor dining, Fiddler Greens being the first one to do so. So again, on June 9th, like I mentioned earlier, the city council enacted an urgency ordinance expanding, giving the restaurants the ability to do outdoor dining and bypassing the planning commission conditional use permit. And again, I want to emphasize that this is only during this emergency time. So at the same time, the city council also adopted a resolution providing authority to the city manager to close any city streets for special event. So again, things developed very quickly on June 17th, 2020. There was a shelter in place update that was last Thursday. We were notified that our restaurant can begin to provide indoor dining as long as they maintain safety and health protocol to protect their customers and importance. So with that being said, Public Works and Community Development quickly worked together. We put together a enforcement permit process, a no fee permit process with the city attorney office, allowing restaurants who desire to provide outdoor dining to come into, to submit application so that city can allow them to put tables out on the sidewalk, including some of the parking spaces in front of the restaurant, like El Camino Financial or Broadway. And again, I want to emphasize this is only allowed during this emergency period. So now we're moving into a design feature. A couple of important factors that came to mind, one being the safety of the employees and also the diners eating out in the sidewalk and also the parking street. And also to meet with the American disability acts standard. So a couple of things that we would discourage restaurants from doing, nothing permanent at this point, no structural roofing and stuff like that. And also, we, we have looked at a couple. I will show some, some pictures later on in this presentation about how we can help the restaurant come up with integrated outdoor dining by putting, putting up some very inexpensive platform so that that would match with the sidewalk height and equally the tables out there. And one other feature that we like to emphasize is also a slippery system. Some of the surfaces, we would like the restaurant to consider using some non-slip, high-slip type of surface to make sure that we minimize tripping phone. And lastly, some vertical element, what I meant by vertical element, I meant planner boxes and stuff like that to delineate a safe space for a diner to eat outdoor. So these are some of the layout requirement that we put together. We like some buffer zone between the dining space and the vehicle path of travel. We like to keep it to at least a four feet wide buffer zone and also the height of the rail lane. Those are all going to be somewhere in the 36, 40, 42 inches height. And we talked about little trailer boxes. And then if the restaurants decide to want to utilize parking spaces in front of the restaurant, we thought that maybe we could do three parking stalls in front of the restaurant for parallel parking or we could do up to four parking stalls. Forty of those are angle parking in downtown. And one thing that we also want to be mindful is drainage flow. Once they put the platform in, we want to make sure that there's temporary pipes underneath the platform to continue to allow the drainage to flow. And also in terms of material used for the outdoor dining space, we would recommend something natural or recyclable building type materials. And also some of the furniture, we talked to some restaurants and they are going to get that, bring that table out. Some are looking into buying some lightweight, inexpensive furniture so they could bring the furnitures out to the sidewalk and bring them back into the restaurants at night. And also we would discourage any type of platform or parking, a street type of outdoor dining spaces at any major intersection. So here are a couple of the, of the pictures that we felt some of the cities are doing and we thought it could be replicated here very quickly, inexpensive. And they can, they can be very, very pleasantly looking. So I wanted to briefly just talk about some of the restaurant that had approaches. We're starting on the first block, the 400 block of Broadway from Taylor to Hillcrest. So far, we have closed, partially closed the parking lot next to ZenBistro so that they could provide outdoor dining. So they have set that up and we are talking to 16 Mile House, one of the restaurants that expressed interest about doing outdoor dining, potentially using some of the parking spaces in front, in front of the restaurant. So with that being said, I'd like to open up for any questions or suggestions from the council. And also we have our planning staff here with us tonight. And any type of suggestion, we would love to hear from you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lim. Let's go to Vice Mayor Schneider.
Hi, I, I love all of this, Katie, and thank you to staff for working on this and for doing it so quickly. My question really comes with the second part, agenda item 11. My only concern, and I brought it up last time, is if so far, we, we're throwing away a lot of the single-use item rules on there. And if we don't have a stipulation that says if you're serving alcohol, you need to serve it in a durable glass that will stay at the restaurant. We may have alcohol moving up and down the street in plastic cups. And, you know, I just don't think that's a good idea. Plus, I think it'll add to littering. I'd be happy if we could add a whereas is saying that restaurants, we're going to go back to keeping our reduction of single-use plastic items. And I don't think it's going to cause a huge hardship. I went and got coffee at Pete's a couple of days ago and yay, they gave me a paper straw. I was so happy. It was a plastic cup, but that I understand, but it was a paper straw. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, let's go, Councilwoman Papen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only concern, Ms. Councilmember Schneider, is the wind in Millbrae. And it's going to be difficult enough if they are outside. So that's my kind of issue too with the presentation that you showed with the planner boxes, but yet no platform. So, I mean, we want to keep people safe and Millbrae wind is historically problematic. That looks like there's a platform on those planner boxes. So, and, and I do appreciate that the restaurants, as Fiddler's Green has tried to do, is trying to deal with the wind. And I would hope that we would try to encourage that for the short period of time that we're hopefully doing this. So those would be my concerns. I don't know if there's a middle ground with Councilmember Schneider there, but.
Mayor, can I, can I ask a follow-up question? Councilwoman, if you use durables, durables are heavier and will do better in the wind than any plastic item.
So, so my, if I may ask?
So I might not understand what you.
Yeah, for clarification, are we insisting that it has to be single use? I mean, or can they bring their regular utensils and regular glasses outside? That's, I think that's where we're kind of crossing over each other here.
I'm, I'm not advocating for single use. I'm hoping that our restaurants will use the regular flatware and silverware, flatware and dishes that they would inside the restaurant, not going to disposables.
Great, that, then I, I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, the only difference is I don't know how the Starbucks and the Pete's or the Jamba Juices, whether they're ready to go back to using a customer's reusable mug. And I don't know where the health department is on that either.
I will, I will follow up with the health regulation to see what is being allowed or not allowed. The last I read was that a lot of the condoms have to be single use so that we don't have any contamination. So I will be shelling writers if we need to, we will do it out with downtown businesses about no single use type of.
Thank you, Mr. Lim.
Okay, let's go to Councilwoman Oliva.
Yeah, I ate Friday night at La Colina outside and we were served with regular dishes and service was as normal as it comes. It was delicious. So they didn't use anything that was disposable. It was all their normal, their, their normal just dishes and plates. Kind of good stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a question about, oh, sorry, let's go to Councilman Lee.
Go ahead and ask your question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, I was going to ask about the expiration of this. So it looks like it would expire at the time that the shelter in place order ends. Or?
Mayor, actually, that's the reason, the reason we're taking this sort of a repeat action from the last meeting is that the, the last two actions were based on the shelter in place ordinance, our shelter in place order and the order of June 17th that was issued by the county technically rescinded the part.
Understood, yeah.
Place. So we needed to find another, I believe we're using the expiration of the emergency so that we can keep this as.
That's the state's declaration of the emergency?
Yeah. But we can terminate it sooner, but this way we're not going to have to come back to you a third time.
Okay. Because, yeah, the indoor dining was allowed very shortly after we had our last council meeting.
Yeah.
And I think that was sort of, that was intended to be one of the factors in terms of outdoor dining was that at that time indoor dining was not allowed.
Right, but I, I think there's a continuing need for the outdoor dining because with the distancing requirements, the restaurants could fit as many tables into the indoor spaces.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think some of that was used for an emergency action to allow and be prepared for outdoor dining. But still with the recognition that indoor dining and some of the conversations we've had with the restaurant operators, even though indoor dining is allowed still with social distancing, they're only going to be able to achieve about a third of what they normally would be able to achieve inside the restaurant. So there still is a need for outdoor dining capacity.
Good. And then as for the recommendation of allowing three parking spaces per restaurant, I don't know how many restaurants have expressed interest in doing parklets, but, you know, how, how much of our parking is that going to eat up?
It, it will, it will impact us. So at one point, we're going to have to look at the balance point or the tipping point because we do need the parking when more and more people are coming out. So we need to come up with another solution. And we will work with the city manager and come back to the council in the near future how we address that. And like I say, mentioned many times tonight, the current outdoor dining design guideline is only for during this pandemic, like. Like the city manager Tom Williams mentioned, a lot of the restaurant would, would lose that indoor capacity because of social distancing.
Okay.
So this will be only for the duration.
So thi- this is why to, to have a, to, to utilize a street and eliminate parking space, those encroachment permits will have to come back to the city council for final approval. So that's, that's in our, our policy. And the reason for that is, you know, obviously there needs to be some limitation to that. Is it one per block? Is it two per block maximum, one on each side? City Millbrae lays out well, actually, because of our surface parking lots within the downtown. So I think for us, we can really, you know, limit the need for encroachment out in the street because of our surface parking lots. But that, that is the one provision that we've added in that ultimately that requires a review and approval by the city council.
Okay, yeah, just the, you know, three spaces per restaurant, that seems like that would add up, you know, pretty.
Yeah.
Eliminating spaces. I'm, I'm wondering if maybe it would make sense to have it based on, you know, the square footage of the restaurant or something like that. So that it somehow, you know, correlated with how much space they would otherwise have.
Yes. Just answer me is our question. So far, we have between six and seven applications expressing interest about creating outdoor dining spaces. So one thing that we are looking at is that we want to look at the later of each block. So if the restaurants are adjacent or next to each other, we're gonna try to encourage them to do a joint outdoor dining spaces so that they could maximize or optimize the spaces out there. And I'll be also up to, up to city stuff like, like we mentioned earlier, we need to look at the parking domain as we are aware. Parking is, is getting more easier now as you see more and more people are walking and driving around Millbrae downtown.
Okay, so it wouldn't be automatic then if somebody fills out the application, they automatically will get there. Assuming that, you know, everything is up to, to the standards here, that they would necessarily get three spaces right off.
That is correct, yes. We're gonna look at it more globally on a block by block basis so that we don't negative the impact of a parking availability downtown.
And then also you mentioned in here the vertical elements and I, I don't know if we, we, we should, we probably shouldn't require this, but maybe it would be something to encourage would be like outdoor heaters.
Yes.
You know, especially because it does get, get cold at night in this area and with the wind as well. So that might be something good to encourage. Okay.
Correct. We are working with ZenBistro about doing some sort of windscreen, if you will, and also some umbrella for the table because it got pretty warm last week. And eating lunch out in the sunlight, that may not be fun. And also to bring out outdoor space heater to keep the area warm at night. So those are the working with individual restaurants on a case by case basis.
Oh, sorry, one more thing. So i- if a restaurant is granted space in a city parking lot, would they then also be eligible for a parklet along the street or is it one or the other?
It's typically gonna be one or the other. So if we're gonna allow them, and if not, a lot of restaurants can utilize the city parking lot because they maybe have a block now. So it's, it's not efficient for them to bus foot in and out of the restaurant. So hopefully those restaurants adjacent bought up against our city parking lot would take advantage of that and they can put quite a few tables out in the parking lot if they choose to do so. And so far, other than ZenBistro, we had no taken from other restaurant and will continue to have a conversation with them.
Okay. All right. Do we need to take these as separate votes since one of these includes an urgency ordinance?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes. Uh, Councilman Lee?
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, I thought that was from before.
No, no, I, I let you speak. You had me.
Okay, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Um, yeah, so I was at Berlin Game the Sunday and they, just to check out their, their street closure and they closed the whole street of, whole Berlin Game Avenue. And it was packed. The whole street was full of people. So since, you know, this is a unique situation with our businesses and the city manager mentioned that they're only getting maybe a third of the revenue at best. I would advocate that we help our businesses as much as possible and maybe close some streets and expand the offerings of restaurant space for dining. And if they want to, if they can use the city parking lot and the street, we should allow that at this time. This is unusual, this is an unusual time. And we, we will, we need to keep our businesses running. We need to keep jobs going. I don't think we should try to be, we try to be as less restrictive as possible at this time. I think everybody, it would, it would benefit the city immensely in many ways. It would make the street more walkable. It would make the streets more lively and it would increase businesses. So I would recommend that we not be, be very draconian or harsh in, or being too restrictive, but open up the, open, open it up.
Okay.
City Manager Williams, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think one of the reasons why staff leaned against that was that there are, you know, other businesses downtown besides restaurants that need to have access. There are some restaurants that are content just doing takeout and delivery. There's also a large senior population here that, you know, would, would struggle to.
The Berlin Game store, the Apple store in Berlin Game was doing very well, okay? And so were the bakeries and so were the, you know, the clothing stores. They were, there were lines out the door.
Apple's always gonna do well.
Yeah. My point is. Apple is gonna do well, too.
My point is people are willing to walk if, if there's good retail. They're gonna walk.
Which we don't have.
If you're gonna get your hair done, you're gonna walk. So you're not gonna, you know, it's not like you're not gonna go and walk. It's not, and it's not a big deal either. What, a block? You're only talking about a block.
Um, I mean, and maybe we should see if, how successful the parklets are for us before closing down the street. Have any.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Started this program yet.
I was in a business today. They said they would highly object to closing the street. So I mean, we should actually leave it up to the business.
There's always people complaining about closing the streets. That's always been a complaint. They complain about that in the street fairs, whatever. But the point is, is that it's not gonna close. If you have a dry cleaner, you're gonna go to the dry cleaners. If you're gonna go to get your nails done, you're gonna get your nails done. Okay, I mean, just the point is that we gotta help our businesses here. So everybody else is gonna, everybody's.
It helps some businesses and it hurts others.
Right, Mayor?
Okay. Okay, let's go to Vice Mayor Schneider.
You know, I, I've been very torn with closing the street. I was more of an advocate for one way, which would allow more space on either side for parklets. Because it depends, seniors, there, there are seniors who are sixty five years old and there are seniors who are ninety five years old. We have a range of all of those and their ability to access. The reality, if you're in your nineties, is most likely you're not gonna be leaving your house for many, many months to come. So maybe it's, it's something I would see. How, how are the parklets doing? How are people using them? I know I was at Osolemia last week. They're not gonna, they don't want a parklet yet. And Lillies didn't want a parklet yet. They feel that they can use their, their larger dining room. So like, I would say, see how it goes. But maybe I'm willing to change a little bit in closing off some of the streets. That said, today Governor Newsom said, well, our cases are going way up. Dr. Fauci was on the news, I mean, yes. Yesterday saying, wow, the cases are going way up. You may have to be considering you, America, have to be closing. So I think being cautious right now is good. I, I don't know if I, and Apple has closed their stores in several countries and North Carolina and a couple of other places in the U.S. because they're worried about their employees.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve Items one, two, and three. Or sorry, approval, council action. All right, we have a second from Councilwoman Oliva. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Pepin?
Aye.
Councilmember Oliva?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schneider?
I, you froze. Can you hear me? I'm a yes.
Mayor Holliver?
Aye.
Hey, the motion to pass Items number one, two, and three are unanimously approved.
Okay.
Just note, that's Item ten on the agenda.
Item ten, item ten and eleven on the agenda and within Items ten, the three recommendations.
Eleven's information.
Correct, yeah. Okay, let's move on now to Item number twelve. This is the informational report on the final draft climate action plan. Do we have a presentation? Oh, yes, Ms. Ryder?
Yes, thank you. Let me get this up. All right, good evening, Mayor Holliver and members of the city council. This evening I'll provide an update on the final draft climate action plan and I'll start with some background on some of the activities that have taken place thus far, including that on February twenty fifth, I provided a staff report on the draft climate action plan. And it was at that point that the public comment period was started. On May fourteenth, we held a public informational workshop for our community and also invited members from the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee as well as the Parks and Recreation Commission. These were all originally going to be separate in-person presentations, but due to COVID nineteen, the workshop was held via Zoom webinar and we invited the committee and the commission. Attendees received a broad overview of the climate action plan, followed by a question and answer session. And then on May eighteenth, a presentation was conducted for the planning commission. There was an extended three month public comment period. It originally was going to end the end of April, but due to some of the delays with COVID nineteen and holding the public workshop, it was extended until the end of May. In addition to comments perceived during the presentations, there were nine people that sent in written, written comments. The most frequent written comments included and comments overall included adopting REACH codes, including for building electrification for new developments. The intent of this staff report is to provide an update on the final draft climate action plan and updated measures prior to having CECL perform the California Environmental Quality Act, and I'll talk about that a little later. Adopting the Building Electrification REACH Code and the County of San Mateo's Disposable Food Service Ware Ordinance are the major updates to the CAP since I last presented in February. Other changes are mine edits, clarifications, some date changes, and updated visuals for some of the charts. As a review, the Climate Action Plan includes a prioritized list of actions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and includes a mix of voluntary strategies and mandatory policies. Many of these strategies are already in place while others are being newly proposed. CAP builds on our existing programs and contains a total of forty three measures, twenty two that are existing, some that are being expanded, as well as twenty one new measures. Several emissions reductions will come from state and county-wide transportation and building strategies. The CAP includes four sectors, including energy, and that includes water conservation, transportation and land use, solid waste, and the all sectors category, which is a green business program that touches upon all the other sectors. The measures in the Climate Action Plan, which I'll refer to as the CAP as well, were selected based on our community as well as the city's resources, our staffing, budget, population, among other considerations. The CAP includes reducing greenhouse gas emissions by ninety three thousand eight hundred eighty seven metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent, which will result in a forty nine percent greenhouse gas emissions reductions by twenty thirty. And it's just about fifty percent, actually. And half of these reductions will come from city measures and the other half from state measures. And keeping in mind that the Climate Action Plan is a living document that will be updated as new technologies and programs emerge. I also wanted to share that since I presented in February, we did receive the final greenhouse gas emissions inventories for twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. And the result for twenty sixteen is a sixty percent reduction and nineteen percent for twenty seventeen. This is comparing to our base year of two thousand and five. The city has surpassed the adopted target of reducing greenhouse gas emissions by fifteen percent by twenty twenty. The Climate Action Plan sets a new greenhouse gas reduction target of forty nine percent below two thousand levels, our baseline, by twenty thirty, keeping in line with Senate Bill thirty two, with an interim target of thirty two percent below two thousand and five by twenty twenty five. A longer term previously adopted greenhouse gas emissions reduction target is eighty percent by twenty fifty, aligning with Assembly Bill thirty two. I wanted to just give some brief information on the REACH codes and including that Peninsula Clean Energy developed model REACH code for agencies to consider adopting to encourage building electrification, solar installation, and electric vehicle infrastructure readiness for new developments. These electrification REACH codes help to reduce carbons, carbon emissions associated with construction, reduce costs, improve indoor air quality and safety of buildings, support affordable housing, as well as increase adoption of electric vehicles. More than eighty percent of a building's energy use does relate to heating, cooling space, and heating water. A little more background is that natural gas is a fossil fuel that's typically used for heating space and water for buildings and is one of the largest sources of greenhouse gas emissions and accounts for approximately forty percent of all carbon emissions. Reducing or eliminating natural gas in the building sector is an important component of climate mitigation to achieve the state's goal of carbon neutrality by twenty forty five. Senate Bill, also Senate Bill one hundred requires a hundred percent clean electric by twenty forty five and knowing that all electric buildings are considered resilient. Background as it relates to the city is that in twenty nineteen, the city received ten thousand dollars from Peninsula Clean Energy to explore REACH codes. It was originally planned to include the REACH codes with last year's building energy code update that went to the city council and was implemented on January first of this year, but there was not enough time to vet this process. It was then changed within the Climate Action Plan to consider adopting REACH codes. However, two other aspects of the REACH codes that remained in the draft Climate Action Plan, a solar requirement for new non-residential buildings, as well as electric vehicle infrastructure for non-residential developments. There is already a requirement for solar for new residential developments that was adopted in the last set of building code updates. Real briefly, there are three types of building electrification ordinances that haven't adopted by various jurisdictions. There's the natural gas ban approach prohibiting gas hookups. That was the approach at City of. And then there's all electric required with exceptions. That was the approach of City of Menlo Park and also the County of San Mateo with fewer exceptions. And then there's the all electric preferred with a mixed fuel option, which was the approach of the City of San Mateo. And I'm, and, and the County of San Mateo and actually four jurisdictions in the county have already adopted REACH codes. There's approximately four that are in progress and a number of remaining cities that are considering the REACH codes. Many cities have adopted what's known as the Menlo Park model due to the ease of administration and efficiency. Also, other counties are adopting REACH codes, including Santa Clara County, where eleven jurisdictions have adopted them to date. I'll real briefly go into just a couple of these examples, and that's the City of Menlo, which has a bit of a hybrid approach and requires residential projects to build all electric for space heating, water heating. They allow natural gas to be used for stoves, fireplaces, and other appliances. There is a pre-wiring requirement for electric appliances, though. It requires non-residential projects to build all electric buildings for all appliances, including for heating, cooling, cooking, fireplaces, and clothes dryer, with the ability to peel for gas cooking appliances. They also include solar and electric vehicle infrastructure with the REACH codes. The County of San Mateo went to the Board of Supervisors with the Menlo Park model. However, the Board of Supervisors amended the proposed ordinance to eliminate gas for cook, gas for cooking, fireplaces, and decorative appliances. However, there's an exception that the county's building official can make for commercial businesses. There's also a clause allowing public agencies, agency-owned and operated emergency centers to utilize natural gas for space and water heating. They also include solar and electric vehicle infrastructure within the REACH codes. The REACH code for building electrification has been included in the final draft Climate Action Plan. Staff is recommending that the REACH codes are further analyzed and options brought to the city council after the CAP is adopted in the fall. With the intent to adopt the REACH codes either before or with the next building code update that will start in twenty twenty two. This will not allow enough time for us to vet the process, determine the best option, and allow some time for the economy to rebound. Peninsula Clean Energy is continuing to provide resources and assistance, and we really appreciate that in coordination with Silicon Valley Clean Energy and the County of San Mateo Office of Sustainability. Last is the timeline. The next step is to perform California Environmental Quality Act CEQA, which will take approximately four months. The reason being is that originally the Climate Action Plan was going to be adopted with the general plan and go through its environmental review. However, due to a difference in our timing and the cap moving ahead sooner, it was decided to perform CEQA for the benefit of future development so that they may streamline from the adopted cap by demonstrating that the projects will have less than significant impact if they're consistent with the Climate Action Plan. Last, the Climate Action Plan will be brought to the city council for adoption by November of this year after the CEQA process. Thank you. I'm happy to take questions.
All right, let's go to Councilwoman Lee.
I don't have any questions at this moment.
I apologize. Councilwoman Pappen?
It's my fault, sorry.
Might have been from the last item.
No questions?
No? Okay. I do have one question about the REACH codes because that looks like a big priority here. And we already have, you know, several models from PCE, from Menlo Park, from the county. I mean, can we just use one of those as a plug-and-play for Millbrae? And so we could move forward on this with limited, you know, staff time needed. We have several, you know, development potential. Yeah, there are several potential developments in the pipeline. And it would be good if we can incorporate the REACH codes with these developments and not after they're already built.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. We have really good support and from Peninsula Clean Energy, as well as from our RICAP's Regional Group Consultants, DNB GL, and I want to thank Blake for his help with the cap and Rafael Reyes with the, with the, with the REACH codes, as well as Megan Kelly, who works with me and bringing this, so to speak, to the finish line. So we have a lot of support and we can bring the options sooner if that is what's desired. We have some good models out there, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, similar to the, you know, the food waste ordinance, we're mostly modeling off of the county's ordinance, right? It didn't, didn't take a lot of our own work to, to draft it. Obviously, there's outreach and whatnot that has to be done. But I'd say let's go forward with it sooner rather than later. Okay, Vice Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I appreciate you bringing that up. I would support that. And I don't want another remodel of the Chevron gas station to put in EV charging stations and then not put in solar panels. It just seems a really waste of a remodeling budget. Shelley, I had a conversation today with the city manager, with acting director Jane Cow, and Shelley to talk about some of the goals. And Shelley, hopefully, we came to an agreement looking at the executive summary, number five and six, where it, where it talks about voluntary 2021, mandatory 2025, of speeding that up to 2023. Are we still in accordance with that, Shelley?
Sure, that, that we can absolutely do that, yes.
And I appreciate.
Timeline and.
I'm sorry. So the other thing that Shelley pointed out, that a number of the, if we compared this to what we saw in February, that a number of the dates have been pushed forward. So I appreciate that. I had a question. I was reading today the comments by one of the, the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee members. There's a lot of good points in there. Some of them made it into the change and some didn't. If there's some things that are environmentally missing, there'll be a chance in the EIR process to again submit responses or changes within the EIR, or would it only be specific to the EIR process?
With the CEQA we're performing will be based on the final draft climate. I would say that if there are other measures, we can look at those and put a timeline and implement them outside of it. The CEQA process, which I didn't mention, will literally start right away so that we can bring this cap to you by the fall and adopt it before the end of the year without having to do further changes. It's been a long time in the coming, so. There are other things. Some of the comments are a lot of outreach and website changes. Those are things that we can do. And some of the programs do fit in with other existing plans.
Okay, thank you. The other thing that we talked about is, and again, having been a staffer at another city where there were more annual reports, but I thought we came to an agreement with that in the future, the city will be getting, council will be getting more annual reports that will help us in our goal setting, which of course helps us set the budget for various activities. So that's actually a really, I'm very excited about being able to see more specific programs, what we hope to achieve, maybe even a baseline. For example, what we talked about was, well, how many resident, how many single-family homes in Millbrae currently have solar power? Great, thank you, everybody. How can we get 10% more or whatever the goal might be? But being able to be more proactive in setting goals and helping to achieve these goals. And I very much appreciate the tree planting in there. I was going to put it in my council comments, but for the people of Millbrae and for our staff in the Parks Department, I have been seeing all of the trees that you're planting. I know we couldn't have Arbor Day this year, but there are new trees on Taylor. There's new trees on, on Paul, on, on Park Boulevard. I've seen new trees in other areas, so I know we're going ahead with some of these. It'll just be great to have a report on that. And with that, there, well, there's a new comment now. So thank you, Shelley, and I look forward to getting this forward, getting it approved.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Pappen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Shelley, great job. Thank you very much. Do we get credit owning an electric car and having solar on my roof? Are you getting credit for all those of us who are doing that? Because I know we can get from the county. They have all the vehicle registrations and we can find out exactly how many electric cars are in Millbrae. So I'm just wondering if that's helpful to you as we move forward?
It's always good to have some data. We do get the results with our greenhouse gas inventories by reducing, which we can see is steadily happening. So, um, utilize that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's good information. It's quite amazing to see actually how many electric cars we have. And despite the mayor's concerns here, I'm still looking for the Tesla chargers whenever we get them. Not giving up yet.
With that, Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the Climate Action Plan and get it started in the process.
Yeah, this is just an informational item, so there's not really any action to take here. But one, one quick question. In the presentation, Ms. Ryder, you, you had some statistics from, I think, 2018 and 2019. Would it be possible to update the, the figure two on page five, which most recently shows 2015 emission numbers?
That's the executive summary.
We have updated, you mean the chart at the end that shows the emissions reductions?
No, there, well, there's a chart on page five that has. Yeah, well, it goes from, I think, 2015, and then it shows three lines, one going up, one going slightly down, and one going farther down, which is the, the goal, target. It looks like, yeah, the most recent data in that is from 2015, 145,000 metric tons.
Oh, I, I know which page you're looking at. It, it shows the current emissions and the needed reductions, what we'll get from the city, what we'll get from the state measures. It is based on 2015. That is the basis of the Climate Action Plan. We did not have the data for 2016 and 17. Otherwise, we would have had to wait longer. There is some inclusions about the emissions inventory at different points within the cap. I could see if something could be done to insert in there, but the cap's kind of based on that and the emissions reductions because of the information we had at that time. We just got the 2016 and 2017 results.
2016, okay. Okay, all right.
Yeah, there's always a delay in getting the reports. It's a lot of gathering of data. And then the county puts together the, the inventories for us, which is really nice, a community-wide inventory. So it was great to see that we, we did achieve that and surpassed the initial goal for 2020.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment. I just wanted.
Sure, Councilman Lee.
I just want to thank Shelley for outstanding report. It was very thorough and very progressive. Thanks, Shelley.
You very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to. Okay, let's go to item number 13, the informational update on the Recreation Center.
Apologize. Are you guys seeing the presentation? Okay, the slides? Great. This is Jane, Public Works. I'm here to give a update on the Millbrae Recreation Center project. All right, so an update on the RFP process. The proposal were originally due on June 12th, but that same week, we received feedbacks from two of three teams of having difficulty meeting the $24.5 million stipulated sum. So after an internal discussion, we issued an addendum on June 10th to all three teams. We clarified that the proposal must be submitted for the stipulated sum. However, for elements that they cannot fit within this budget, they must list those as exclusions. A quick example of that would be, let's say, landscape boulders. They are included in the RFP as part of the bio-retention area. However, after they, the design build team priced out all the project elements, the team decided this, this item would be excluded from the base proposal. So the team must list this landscape boulder item as an exclusion from the base proposal and also list a price as an add alternate. We also extended the proposal due date by one week to June 19th, which was last Friday. And I am happy to report that we received proposals from all three teams. And interviews are being conducted this week. We had one today and that went really well. Even with the one-week extension, we are still anticipated to come to council this July with a recommendation toward the contract. So with the update on RFP, I want to jump into project financing. So last year, the city was in a progress of obtaining a $14 million short-term loan from the county, Sematell County, to help, help bridge the period between construction of the Rec Center and the receipt of development impact fees. So fund would be borrowed at the time that cash is needed. But unfortunately, due to the current COVID-19 pandemic, the county is currently facing a $103 million deficit. Though they are still committed to the loan, they have requested that we defer for one and a half to two years. So looking at the design-built project, the budget that we are estimated at currently is $26.7 million, which includes 5% contingency. And this is the, the contract amount, including the contingency. Does not include FFNEs and some of the soft costs moving forward. So in terms of secure funding, we have $14.4 million, and this is net amount moving forward. That breaks down to insurance settlement of $2.7 million, land sale to BART is $1 million, and this is net. We actually received $2.25 million for the sale, but we have spent some of that money on a pre-construction task. One of the big ticket item that was used was the Swinerton Project Management Contract that was just shy of $1.2 million. And then the next, the third funding source we have is the Parks Impact Fee from TOD2 Project, and that one is $7.62 million. We also received developer, developer contribution. This is community benefit funds of $2.88 million. We have also received various donations of just shy of $200,000. So that totaled up to a secure funding of $14.4 million. So the gap that we're trying to close is $12.3 million. And like I was saying earlier, last time we came to council, we had a $14 million loan from the county. Unfortunately, that is being deferred by one and a half to two years. So what is our plan, our backup plan? So we came up with a couple of funding strategies. And that includes short-term borrowing from already received developer fees and also enterprise fund balance. The, these loans will also be paid back by future development fees and future revenues. So so far, we have received approximately $5 million in impact fees from the TOD2 Gateway Project that is available. And for the enterprise fund, we have calculated approximately $6 million that will be available. Now, the third funding strategy is the sales of surface properties. We estimated $3.5 million of, by selling three surface properties. Two of the properties sells is already in progress. We have issued a request for proposal to seek a licensed and qualified broker to sell these two properties. And one of them is at the Sequoia Avenue near Mills High School. The other one is at Barcelona and Santa Margarita. Proposal are due back this Friday, June 26th, and we expect that this transition be completed by the end of November. The third property, we intend to bring that forth to city council in July for discussion and approval. Now, that totaled up to $14.5 million in additional funding. We also have four potential funding possibilities. And then the first one is loan from Sematell County, and that's what we talked about earlier, which was deferred. That's $14 million. And then we have the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant of $1.88 million. So we applied for this grant back in February in the amount, and it's for outdoor recreation areas. That's as part of this project and also includes tennis court improvements. So grant selection is scheduled for this month, but we haven't heard back yet, so we'll provide an update as soon as we hear back. And then the third one is licensed preschool partnerships. So with that, we're expecting approximately $1.5 million. And then, of course, we're going to continue fundraising and donation. So the potential funding that we could receive is $17.35 million, and this is above the two-point, someone million, two, sorry, $12.3 million gap that we need to, we need to fill. So next slide is the schedule. This is the same slide that was presented at last month's meeting. We are now wrapping up the proposal stage, and we intend to come back to council for the award of the design-built contract in July. Construction and this final design work will get started and move in, and substantial completion will be May 2022. So that concludes my presentation. I want to take this opportunity to introduce Peter Formansanti, sorry, Peter. Peter Fee from Swinerton. He is the project executive for the project as we move into the construction phase. John Baker is also here with us today. He is the project executive during the RFP phase. And I'm also open to any questions right now.
All right, thank you for that report. Let's go to Councilwoman Pappen? No, okay.
No questions, sorry.
No questions, okay. I had a question about the funding. So the 14 million from the county, that sounds like, you know, it's one and a half to two years deferred. one and a half to two years deferred. Well, you know, the goal is to get this up and running within in less than two years. Sounds like that's not going to come through at this point. So city manager, what would be your recommended strategy for, you know, the funding and the cash flow of this project?
Yeah, so I think in terms of the cash flow, since since we have a little bit more than $14 million in the bank, we will not have to draw down on any other outside funding until the second quarter of next calendar year. So sometime in May or June of 2021, I feel comfortable enough. We've worked with both Mike Conneran, another attorney from Jones Hall by the name of Chick Adams, who's been involved with the city in past sewer bond issues. We've consulted with him. We are legally authorized to invest in our own debt. Meaning that since we have surplus funds right now for the short term in both our water and sewer fund, meaning the the fund is there and it's not earmarked for any projects that we can get to between now and the next three years. We can do a short term loan from the enterprise funds to the general fund. Obviously, as you can see from the financing, we won't need all 14 million. I'm anticipating that the the amount of loan that we actually will need will be somewhere between seven and eight million. And so we will only draw down either from our enterprise funds and that type of loan as we need it, or a year from now, as we continue working with the county utilizing their loan and draw down on 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 their loan. But either way, we've got, you know, two solid means of short term financing. And when I say short term, it's a seven year term, two and a half percent interest. If we utilize our enterprise funds, we'll have to treat the enterprise funds that it's it's like an investment. So we wouldn't be able to reduce the market rate, interest rate, or competitiveness of that loan from the enterprise fund. So right now that is about two, it's a little bit less than two and a half percent. We've been using two and a half percent over a seven year term. So I feel very comfortable once we solidify either the lease agreement with our enterprise funds and we bring that to the city council, or we move forward with the with the lease leaseback agreement with the county in the next couple of weeks. Either way, we have an option. We don't need both. We're going to have to choose one or the other. My preference would be, you know, again, let's, since we're legally authorized, let's just invest in our own debt and be easier to manage, easier to draw down and and easier to proceed. So I think I think we're, you know, we're in good shape, a little bit of creative financing here that will work. Other cities have used this this type of financing, borrowing from enterprise funds and future funds extensively with the land development projects that we have approved that are in the pipeline. I'm confident.
Okay. And one other question, how much total did we receive in development impact fees from the BART Gateway Republic project?
So in in total, in total fees, six, a little over 16 million, and development impact fees, a little over 14 million.
14 million for parks specifically?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, for parks specifically, about seven and a half million.
Okay, I thought it was significantly more than that.
Yeah, total development impact fees are a little over 14 million, but but parks themselves are about seven and a half million.
Okay, I thought it was about 80% or so of the total, but it was for the park fee.
Yeah, I the the way the way it was structured in the specific plan is a little bit different than the fees of Citywide a couple of meetings ago.
Okay. All right. Oh, sorry, one last thing. There was a number in there, I think it was about one and a half million anticipated from a preschool operator. How solid is that? I mean, obviously, we don't have an operator yet, but is that a standard? You know, a standard component of selecting a preschool operator that they would pay a portion that's significant of a portion of the capital cost?
Yeah, so as you may recall, we went out for an RFP for preschool operators and we shortlisted to where we will be bringing to the council a recommendation. I believe it's the second meeting in July. I don't want to mention publicly the name right now of the school. But we have been working with them on what our debt service would be on short term funding, what the lease amount would be. You know, and then the competitiveness of a tuition on a per month tuition enrollment and the preschool operator that's I have been in business, I think, at least 30 years can can fund based on what the market rate is per month per child. So we we're in good shape and we'll be bringing that to the city council.
Okay. All right, let's go to Vice Mayor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions. So the properties on Sequoia, since we're going out, I assume that that means that the high school district did not want first dibs on that land. They do not want it?
No, they do. And we we need to have a discussion with the high school to see how bad they want it and see if they're going to pull the trigger or not.
In which case, okay, good to know. It would be if you could keep, golly, I can't speak tonight. If you could please keep us informed of that, if they're going to go, that probably sounds like they've got their heart set on their 147 units on the baseball field.
I I, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't jump there. I I think that they have just said that they're interested in the property. And so we need to sit down and go through that process and see if they are interested in purchasing it or move on to a market rate buyer.
Okay, I would love to see that happen. I just don't have a lot of faith on outside agencies and how they deal with Millbury. So I wish you the best of luck there. On the two funds that we're borrowing from the the enterprise fund, which enterprise fund or is that all enterprise funds that the city has?
Yeah, so that's a great question. We would flatten it out by by borrowing both from water and sewer. So we maintain a a level of required reserves and we also maintain a level of liquidity within each of those enterprise funds that that as, you know, as we're ready to move forward with projects that we would be able to do that. So this would actually, you know, not jeopardize, you know, the future expenditures. But we just, we have projects, we just can't get to those projects. So we're investing that money as we speak. We're investing those in in leaf funds and treasury bills. So we can invest in our own short term bridge loan, and we think that that's feasible and a good idea.
And again, for the public, just to make that clear, borrowing from sewer and water isn't going to increase their rates for that purpose?
No, and and it's money that is already being invested. And I think that's the important thing for the public to know. That, like I said, it's, and I think right now our rate is about right around 2%. And we've, and that's, that's the market we've estimated our interest to be two and a half percent. And we did speak with, again, Chick Adams this morning from Jones Hall, and that interest rate is actually higher than market right now.
Nice to hear some good news. On the other item on on Director Cow's list, it was developer fees, and I think it was in the 5 million range. Don't quote me. Which developer fees are those?
So those are, as the mayor was mentioning, there's seven and a half million allocated.
Oh, they're all TOD2 funds?
They're all TOD2 funds.
Okay, so that was my next question was if in the course of the next two years, we bring on the El Rancho development, the Burger King development, that would also help fill some of this gap, wouldn't it?
Yeah, and 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 that's, that's another good question. Interestingly enough, those are two projects I'm not relying on, actually.
I don't think.
To do with the state laws changing.
At this point.
It it does. But I don't, I don't, might correct me if I really don't want to talk about that because it's not on the agenda and we're in the middle of negotiations with the Anton Development Company. And so I don't, I don't want to bring anything up
Okay.
here publicly that would jeopardize those negotiations or not have them have their due process.
I'm going to give you a gut feeling I have from having been on Senator Hill's housing call with every city. I'm not sure that they understand what they did in terms of us being able to build our parks or specifically for Millbury to help build the rec center. So whatever it is feasible, I think we should make sure that we're keeping Assemblyman Mullin and Senator Hill informed on how critical being able to get developer fees are for the sake of Millbury. We know it, but I'm not sure I got it from Senator Hill that day. I might have misread him, but that's my take on it.
Well, and just as a heads up, Mike Connor and our city attorney will be providing the city council during a study session on July 14th, an update and and significant briefing on SB 330.
Thank you. Thank you. That seems better than when I first heard that we lost the loan or that the loan is delayed. I'm feeling a little bit better. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just say, we've been working closely with Mike Callagie and his office, and Mike and the county have been great. And, you know, unfortunately, we find ourselves in this in this pandemic, but they're willing to help. They're they're staying in the game and just very much appreciate the partnership and close relationship we're developing with the county.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Aliva.
Sorry, my dogs are, it's that time of the night. But I think that Councilmember Schneider's comments with the enterprise funds is where I wanted to go. I want to make it perfectly clear that rates are not going to be affected by these, but but also clear that these are everybody's monies. So we're using our people's monies to fund this and make sure that we're transparent. And I, when you use the word creative financing, I was not sure if that's what you meant by creative financing, using the enterprise funds, or if there was some other creativeness that was going on.
No, no, just creative and looking, as I mentioned, that we are legally authorized to invest in our own debt. And I think that that's a good way to look at that. It is everyone's. We're not using the money now. We're investing it in some other fund when we can take that money, invest it in ourselves and pay ourselves back at a little bit higher of an interest rate that we can get out there right now in what we can invest in T bills and leaf rate. It's local agency investment fund. And if you recall, just just a quick story, back, what was it, the late 80s with the, in early 90s, Orange County went through that fiasco and invested in junk bonds and created a tremendous rate of return and everybody was and that collapsed. And after that, state laws really narrowed what cities can invest in. So much so that basically it is just T bills and local agency investment fund. So we are very limited. Rates have been extremely low. I think at the start of this pandemic, as the market was decreasing, just like in early 2008, there were a couple of days that we actually had negative returns on our T bills. So.
Just taking out, taking out of one pocket and putting it into another, but paying ourselves back in the process.
Exactly, yeah. And it does not affect rates. It doesn't affect the flow of projects that we've committed to.
Right.
So, yeah, those are good questions.
Sure, that point is very clear. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to make the point that we can't use the money to lower our rates either. So that's important.
You mean the sewer and water rate money?
Yeah.
City manager, it's capital money, right? It's money has to be used for capital projects.
Yeah, so I don't, so Councilmember Lee, yeah, we can't because there are projects in in the capital improvement program and future projects that those rates were established for. We actually have another, right now, we have a Series A bond issue that's out that we're paying debt service on our sewer funds. And we will be issuing a Series B on the on the future sewer revenue. But not at this time. So since we're not issuing bonds, we're not ready to issue those bonds, we can utilize this money, like I said, as an investment. Again, talking with with our bond counsel at Jones Hall, this does not impact our our bond issue. This does not impact our future bond issue. And there are certain things that that need to be done. The city has already adopted an investment strategy back in 2017, which was required by state law at that time. There isn't anything in the investment strategy that prohibits us from doing this. And so, yeah, I mean, I think we're in good shape. If if the objective is, you know, let's go get a community center built, we can do it. I'm confident. And and very, very low risk to the enterprise funds, treating this as an investment. And I think I think we're good to go and on schedule and can go out and get it done for the community.
All right, excellent. Okay, well, thank you very much for that report. Let's move on now to item number 14. This is a stop sign regarding the stop sign installation at South Ashton and Sequoia Avenue. Do we have a presentation, please?
So Mayor, if I can, as I think everyone knows on the council and for the public benefit before, our acting community development director and Public Works Director Key Lim begins a presentation. This is a, has been kind of a longstanding dispute with one of our residents, a former employee. And we wanted to put this on the agenda so we can actually have a discussion about the process that we went through, what we did, why we did it, and and have an open dialogue and discussion. So with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Key Lim to provide a presentation.
Shella?
Okay.
I'm sorry, at the intersection of Sequoia and South Ashton Avenue. So here's a quick timeline. Back in late 2018, I was notified of a pedestrian and automobile accident at the intersection. So I did a site visit in spring, early spring of 2019, around early April, I did some investigation and noticed that there was some site distance obstruction at the intersection. There are several mature large trees at the intersection that cause the views of brother coming up. I mean, coming out to South Ashton Avenue on Sequoia. So on May 2019, I started a UTCD warrant study for stop sign installation. So with that, say, I noticed that some skewer site distance and geometry of the intersection. So I authorized the installation in late May 2019. So at the time, I did not have any traffic count data because typically we don't get that traffic count that I collect in in summer because of schools are in recess and also of summer vacation. Traffic tends to be slow during the summer months. And also, we typically do our annual traffic count in throughout the city in October of every year. So we decided to also include the traffic data collection at the intersection of Sequoia and South Ashton. And the data became available to city staff around early January of 2020. And with that, once I got all the data, I just revisited revisited the warrant study and completed the warrant study to justify the installation of the stop sign at Sequoia at the South Ashton intersection in February 2020.
Hey, Key, I'm going to jump in here because part of the reason why I wanted to put this on the agenda is to clarify a few things. And when you and I have talked about it and it's not reflective on this timeline, one is you had indicated that you had completed the warrant study in May and installed the stop sign. So I want that to be clear on the record. And that you also decided to, that that at that time, like distance visibility, a four way stop sign was was warranted. And so you installed.
That is correct.
In May. Then you waited.
That is correct, yes.
Because you also want to do a traffic count, but wanted to wait until school was in session to get a peak AM and peak PM daily count because of school traffic. Then we received in February of this year, a Public Records Act request for the warrant. And you had realized that it hadn't been signed. And then the warrant was actually signed, but the warrant being signed versus the findings that you made in May of 2019. But the warrant being signed versus the findings that you made in May of two thousand and nineteen, that a stop sign was warranted and it was installed, I think is what is important here because our city attorney can jump in here. Technically, the warrant and that oversight of the warrant not being signed did not prohibit us legally from not installing the four-way stop once we knew that the site visibility met the warrants. So is there anything in that commentary that is incorrect?
No, that is an accurate statement. And the reason why, once I started the warrant back in May of twenty nineteen, I decided that a stop signs are needed because there existed a dangerous situation at the intersection of Sequoia. So I think it needed to be addressed, therefore the urgency to install this stop sign at the end of May twenty nineteen. And then, and then again, in due to a recent PRA from, I decided to do a quick peer review with our traffic engineer. We have a couple contracts, our city traffic engineer, and they have validated my findings on the stop sign installation and deemed that to be, to be the right institute to, to help solve the site distance obstruction at the intersection. So we thought that is more like a summary of the timeline for the last year or so. So I'd like to open enough for questions from the council if there are any.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
No, I just think that the, that is a very busy intersection. It's traffic by two schools, Spring Valley, parents and kids, as well as Mills High School. So it's, it's a hugely impactful event. So thank you staff for realizing that and putting a stop sign there. Also, we read the council received two letters of support for the, for the stop sign, saying the same thing, that there have been witnesses of many traffic collisions. And people were worried about the amount of foot traffic that goes through that intersection. I feel that the stop sign is warranted and they want to keep the stop sign there.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Lee. Vice Mayor Schneider?
I didn't see the letters today. Hopefully I will see them. Talked to staff earlier today. I've also been on that corner and see a cyclist come down with traffic coming on Ashton, and the cyclist had to hit the curb to avoid the car. So I think that it's something that's deserving. I did spend some time with our, our Mr. Sandrini, talking about how we can improve things. And the city manager and I talked today about getting more information up about our processes on the website. So how, how, what goes on to get a stop sign put in? What are the results? I really liked today's staff report because it showed some really good line of sight data in there that can help the public understand what's going on. As we go in, as we get to move forward from all of the traffic calming workshops that Public Works held, I think we might get more of the public saying, well, I want this, no, I want that. And I think adding more information to our website, being more transparent about processes, getting the information up in a timely fashion will really help the public understand what's going on and keep us all working in the same direction. But I very much appreciate the staff report. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Pappin?
I just wanted to acknowledge, Mr. Mayor, that we did receive Mr. Sandrini's letter as well. So thank you to everybody who commented.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Lewis, do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, we do have one public comment for this item. It is from Lou Sandrini, and I will go ahead and read that. Mayor and council members, the stop signs are not warranted or needed. They violate the cardinal principles of good traffic engineering and other considerations. Number one, stop signs should not be used to control speed. Number two, stop signs can be unsafe and increase the likelihood of accidents because when obviously not needed, they are often violated with California stops placing pedestrians and opposing traffic who count on full stops in jeopardy. The Ashton stop signs are obviously not needed, as you will see. Three, they increase noise and environmental pollution. Four, they increase gas consumption and vehicle wear and tear costs. Five, they create driver irritation and bad behavior by simple routine observation. One sees that the volume of traffic on one street is insignificant compared to the opposing street. For example, at this intersection, in a three-day period, the city is stopping over thirteen thousand cars on Ashton and a minuscule fraction of that on Sequoia. Six, the situation encourages stop violations that will persist, creating unsafe conditions unless enforcement is rigorous. And such enforcement will bring down the wrath of citizens on the council. The California Manual on Uniform Control Devices specifies criteria for determining if a stop sign is warranted. These stop signs do not come close to meeting any of the criteria related to the volumes, speeds, or accidents. There is a criterion for clear sight distance. The corner sight distance should be two hundred and fifty feet. The left side clear distance is noted at two hundred and thirty-eight feet, just twelve feet short. The only thing in the line of sight is a small tree trunk and a post. Common sense says there is no problem here. If the city strictly applied the two hundred feet criterion at most intersections, there would be hundreds of stop signs all over the city. Sensible application of the California criteria and consideration of stop sign adverse impacts says that stop signs are not warranted. South Ashton stop sign should be removed. Staff and those not cognizant of the bad things about stop signs will say, oh, you never can take down a stop sign. Staff and council need to be embarrassed by doing the right thing. Council should not be swayed by the staff report. By a previous letter to you, I pointed out how factually inconsistent and contradictory the report is. The process was fatally flawed. The city manager unequivocally assumed, assured, excuse me, assured as the signs would be not be installed before a warrant study indicating they are warranted was completed. The signs were installed way before the warrant study. The peer review noted was perfunctory. It had no documentation of any sort of review, only one sentence that said, the analysis looks good and you can use what you have already done to justify the multi-way stop installation. The warrants for South Ashton stop sign are not met. Council, take down these stop signs. That is the end of the public comment.
Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could just jump in here real quick, just to clarify some things. So one, the stop sign was not installed due to speed, not at all. It was installed due to site visibility issue and the call of the city engineer that the site visibility created some of the issues with the accident in two thousand and eighteen. And as a result, the warrant study was done, I think, as we've discussed this evening, prior to the installation of the stop sign. And lastly, thirteen thousand vehicles on Ashton. When schools in session during the AM peak especially, that intersection is very crowded due to Mills traffic and Spring Valley traffic going one way as well as traffic going towards the middle school, Taylor Middle School in the morning. So I've observed that intersection. And I think clearly if there are any questions about what we did and why we did it, the warrants for the four-way stop sign, I understand Mr. Sandrini disagrees, but I think from here we can agree to disagree. And if we knew that the stop signs were warranted and we did not install a stop sign because somebody is against it, but it meets the warrants, and there was an accident, we would be very much liable as a result. And so I wanted to take the time to clear the air on some of Mr. Sandrini's comments.
All right, thank you very much.
Be concerned about liability. I'd hate to say that every time we don't, you know, some of these things aren't brought to our attention. We do have some discretion in terms of making good decisions, but I think we're concerned about safety. That was the impetus for the installation.
All right, well, thank you very much for that presentation, and hopefully we can move on. All right, let's go to item number fifteen. This is council discussion and appointment to council subcommittee for Westside Development for the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan. Do we have a report on this?
Yes, Mayor Oliver, there's just a very brief report that I will bring forward to you. And basically, at this time, we're asking council to discuss and consider appointment of two council members to serve on the council subcommittee for Westside Development in the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan area. As you are all well aware, in January of each year, the council discusses some of the various subcommittees that the council has and makes appointments to those subcommittees for the upcoming calendar year. From time to time, the council may create subcommittees to address current and or ongoing projects. And at this time, there has been a council request to consider the creation of a subcommittee for the development of the property in the Westside area of the Station Area Specific Plan. So this just concludes my report, and it opens up for council to discuss and consider making an appointment for this subcommittee. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any comments, questions about this? See, a couple of hands up, but I think that may have been from the previous item.
My hands up.
Okay, Vice Mayor Schneider?
I think Councilwoman Pappin suggested this, and maybe she should go. But my question is exactly what would be the parameters of this study? Are they only looking at the two city properties there? Are they looking at the Seven Sisters? Is, if this subcommittee is created, will it prevent any of the rest of us of talking to Sarah Station, or Bart, or High Speed Rail, or Mr. Kelly from High Speed Rail? What would this actually do once a committee has been created to cover the area?
Mr. Williams, do you have a comment on that?
So the, as I understand the question, what are the parameters of this particular subcommittee?
Correct.
So as of right now, the way it's agendized, it would just cover the West Side development properties in the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan. But I think if the council would like to discuss other projects and the need for a subcommittee, you know, say, on the South Side of the specific plan, or in the entirety of the specific plan, or any developments within the city, I think this agenda item allows.
See, that's the problem that I have. If, for example, I'm sorry, Mayor, so if it's the entire West Side, that's the four, that's the properties that are being discussed. I'm trying to figure out how to say that.
Mayor, you had another question. If, would a, would a subcommittee preclude other council members from communicating with interested developers or representatives from High Speed Rail if they are not on the subcommittee?
Thank you, Mayor.
Can I help?
Sure.
I'll jump in. It should not, certainly not with other public entities. I think all the members of the council are free to interact. You may want to defer to the committee if you prefer them to take the lead and for some consistent positioning from the city. The one thing I would just caution against is, in talking to any potential developers, if there are going to be actions before the council on those projects, you do need to be aware of the ex parte limitations and the fact that those discussions, if they're going to involve in what we call a quasi adjudicatory issue, are all going to need to be disclosed. We tend, we, I think, city attorneys in general advise their council members not to interact too much with developers because those issues can get a bit sticky. The other thing I would say is, and I think you all know this, careful to be, not to give pronouncements for or against a particular project that may come before you. Otherwise, you may be viewed as biased and end up being disqualified. But I think you all have a good sense to follow those rules and to limit those discussions. So it would not, right? Just the short answer is, it would not. What I would suggest, though, is that the council set the scope of what the committee is going to do. So I think that's what the city manager is trying to say. In other words, it's posed West Side. It's within the specific plan. And that's mostly what used to be called Site One in the old specific plan. But it would include the Sarah Station project, those seven properties, the Peter's Restaurant, the city-owned property. I think all that will be included within the, what I see within the West Side. That may or may not be what you want. I'd leave that up to you to decide as you, as you charge this committee with whatever mission you want to give it.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Vice Mayor?
Yes and no. I'm just uncomfortable. This is a huge area and incredibly important to Millbrae. In a way, it's very much like the rec center, with the exception that the rec center rebuild was a very defined project, and clearly you had to have conversations between council meetings. And I think Site One is not as homogeneous as the rec center. And I would prefer not to have this committee. I would suggest that, given that staff knows more about what's going on than we all do, that maybe we add this for a monthly update of whatever can be discussed, given that some of this is in negotiation and can't be discussed. But I'm just very uncomfortable with a subcommittee of the entire West Side of the specific plan. Way too broad for me.
Okay.
And I think we lose in transparency. I think it's a, it's a lack of being transparent. It would be much better to come to council meetings.
Understood. I think, you know, obviously, no decision would be made without the full council's approval. But thank you very much for those comments. Let's go to Councilwoman Pappin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, transparency is extremely important, yes, but also is talking in a united front. So if any council members are talking to Bart or High Speed Rail or whatever, I mean, we need to really keep the entire council informed of what's being said and who's being met with in order to keep consistency because we are a small city. And we want to make sure we're speaking in one voice as we present here. We all know we have an issue with High Speed Rail, and I'm hoping that we can have either a closed session or a public session so that we can approach that as an entire council. I think that would be very helpful here. I think the, my impression of the subcommittee would be that they would meet with interested parties and communicate that directly to the council so that everyone was on, had similar understandings about the potential of what would be happening at that location. We are trying to move things along in an economy that is trying to recover. So really keeping the council informed and trying to move projects along because it's extremely valuable, the properties all along that corridor. I thought that was my impression of having a subcommittee is that they would be available to communicate the council's desires or needs and really see what's out there. So that was my impression. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And sorry, and that was specific to the West Side of the MSASP?
Yes.
In your opinion, okay. Thank you. Okay, let's go to Councilman Lee.
I was just going to volunteer to be on this committee if, and I think that this is just typical of all subcommittees. It's this way of being more efficient and having opportunity to help developers and the cities move a project along quicker. It is no decisions are being made by the subcommittee, and the subcommittee reports to the council. So it's supposed to be transparent and as well as supposed to be efficient.
I'd like to volunteer too.
Okay. Councilwoman Aliva?
Thank you. So I think that we, we as a group have demonstrated how progress and how we can move efficiently and effectively when we just had a subcommittee with the Peninsula Humane Society. And like anything else, we have to trust each other. Alternative motives would be to continue what we're doing and kind of not get anywhere. I think that we could, we can further our progress with this site if we do put on a subcommittee, and I am all in favor of it. It works well. And of course, I would love to be part of the subcommittee.
Okay. All right, so maybe we could take sort of two, two motions, and maybe the first one would be. The creation of the subcommittee and also the. Parameters and what, you know, what's what is included in the scope of the subcommittee? And then after, if that's approved, then we would go to appoint council members or see who's interested.
I would make a motion to move the subcommittee forward for the West Side of El Camino on. The developments of the East Side. How are we going to term? What are we going to call this?
The West. Side of the MSASP.
Okay.
If you recall, it's Site One, which is directly the geographic area of the West Side in the specific plan.
So I'm. For clarification then, does Site, the MSASP includes the old Millbrae Theater, the gas station, 76 Gas Station? But I can't remember if that was also part of Site One.
No.
Well, part of Site One, but it's in the.
The term Site One was retired in the 2016. Yeah, so maybe we could just define it geographically between El Camino and the. Train tracks. Within the north of Millbrae Avenue within the MSASP, something like that.
Yep.
North. Yeah.
That's the former Site One.
Isn't the title, isn't that called TOD One? There's there's just.
Former. Former site.
Well, TOD One is specifically Muses Development as has been approved.
Okay.
And and then the scope is to meet with. Potential developers?
Yes.
Report back to council.
I don't think so. I mean, I think. You know, the bulk of the meeting through developers should be through staff. I mean, all of us are welcome to meet with developers. But I don't, I don't think the members of the subcommittee should be the ones going out trying to find developers.
No.
No, 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 yeah.
What what comes to Millbrae would be what we would, what the subcommittee would review and report.
Like, like, for example, you know, I've had discussions that we've had a couple of different. Development entities interested in developing out the West Side. Some of them, we have said, you know, no, it's not the right time to bring forth a. A study session concept at the city council. This subcommittee could be the good, you know, the proper. Forum for review instead of coming to the council, you know, to to. At least have a discussion with the subcommittee and then the subcommittee can make a determination. Whether, you know, to move forward with a. A study session of the full council or not at that time. I mean, that's that's kind of an example. Of how I see the city, the the subcommittee functioning.
Here.
Yes, yes, Vice Mayor Schneider.
Going back to the RFP that went out for the group for the bid to. Do the public outreach for the redesign of the Rec Center. It was a committee of two. They made a recommendation. As a councilperson who wasn't on that, I had to go sit in the city clerk's office and read the bids. I couldn't take notes. I wasn't supposed to say anything about what happened. And my concern at the time was that the recommendation of that subcommittee to go to Group Four would give Group Four the. Advantage over the next bidding in the processes. That's another reason why for economic development, I don't like this. I find it very non-transparent. And what gets written up in a staff report. Is often exactly what we vote because if you vote against it, you're looked at upon as the bad guy. A good example of that are the recommendations that come from the committee that interviews people to serve on committees and commissions. Once it gets to the full council, it's pretty much a done deal. And if this subcommittee becomes a done deal for what's going to get developed in the significant portion of Millbrae. I have really big concerns about that and I would rather it come from council, come to the full council or better. It goes to staff until there's an actual viable project. We direct staff into what we want there. That's what the specific plan was. That's when we dictated heights, uses, etc. We should not be as a subcommittee telling the rest of council what they think wants. And the way the process is, is whatever that subcommittee recommends is generally what happens. I'm really concerned about this. I really do not like the idea.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Williams, do you have any? Thoughts about that or any? Potential way to reconcile some of these concerns?
Well, I I think that, you know, I work with with our city attorney to make sure that the scope of the. Subcommittee is clear, so the subcommittee isn't necessarily hearing anything or taking a position. Prior to a public hearing, there was just a case in Sacramento. A couple of months ago that. A project that was was denied was ruled. Well, by not unconstitutional, I guess unconstitutional because it lacked due process. Because minds were made up of the decision makers prior to the public hearing. And I think we need to be careful of that. So I would say that, you know, my expectation is not to have the subcommittee make any decisions. But to just learn what's going on and 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 instead of, you know. Kind of being the conduit of a release for people that are interested in the in the property and having a forum to. Have kind of preliminary discussions with a subcommittee of the council. And then the subcommittee of the council can bring that forth to the full subcommittee. And I think, I think ex parte. Communication, you know, is something that maybe we're trying to manage here. Policy direction, you know, of the city council rests with the full city council, not with the subcommittee. Certainly recommendations, but I look at this more as a as a means to. Address some concepts and issues that are out there of multiple parties that are interested in developing out the West Side. And they and they can all get a fair.
So question then, there is clearly. A split within the council members on our view on housing or mixed use. Now, we've approved, if it should ever get built, a great deal of housing. So I know I would love to see commercial and and I'd love to see a hotel. But if council members serving on this committee are already set in exactly what they want to see there, how is that going to be handled?
Well, so I can answer that. So the the policy's already been established. The land uses and the policy for what could be built. Whether it's residential, whether it's office, whether it's mixed use, is already established in the specific plan. And that specific plan cannot be violated. So if there is a need. Then there needs to be an amendment taken to the planning commission, then to the city council. To amend the policies within the specific plan. But Councilmember Snyder, what you just said.
Vice Mayor.
That's already been adopted. Those policies have already been established by the council.
And yet we fought them tooth and nail through the approval of TOD One and Two. I I mean, let's just be honest. It's all on tape. It was fought and it was fought and actions were delayed for months, if not years. Based on differences of what the five of us might like to see built.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Pappan.
Okay, yeah, I. As Mr. Williams described it, I think it's more of a conduit here to keep the council informed. Of what's being presented out there. This council has been briefed on the highest best use. Of the one, at least one or two of the properties there. So there's no decisions that should be made by any. Any council member or any subcommittee. I think it was more brought about to actually lessen the burden on staff who has been bombarded. And a lot of staff times being taken up. By some of the, there's, I guess, different proposals out there. So. It would, the way I was viewing it is that it would be more of an informational committee. To report to the council to say, hey, this is, you know, these parties are interested. This is what's being proposed. No decision should be made or recommended. By anyone on the council. And as for TOD One and Two, there was a little more to the discussions. As to access and parking and things like that that some of us objected to and still object to, so.
So given those comments, perhaps we could include as part of the scope for the subcommittee. The subcommittee shall not recommend. A developer of city-owned property. On the West Side of MSASP.
I absolutely agree with that.
Vice Mayor Schneider, does that help alleviate your concerns if?
To a degree, to a degree.
Directed to the subcommittee?
Yeah. To a degree. It wasn't any of your names on the side of a bus over development projects. It wasn't any of you getting threatening emails. I don't want to go back into that environment, period.
I don't know if you know that about all of us.
I know that not one of you stood up and said, stop the bullying for that. So I'm very afraid of this committee.
I know that there was a campaign run specifically against.
Oh, man, I I got.
All right, okay, I'm gonna, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead. Let's not re-letigate the past.
Mayor, I've had my hand up for like the last fifteen minutes.
Sorry, I've seen the same hands up. Thought those were previous comments, but Councilwoman Oliva, go ahead.
Sorry, it's because he never called me.
Sorry.
Hey, so I think that the subcommittee can be very effective in our city. And it doesn't have to make recommendations to any particular, particular developer. But this is to be of service to our city. We need to be more effective and more efficient. We have an opportunity that we are not taking advantage of. And with two of us going forward to communicate to the other three. To make up their own decisions. And vote like we will on every single situation. We have so many committees that exist, subcommittees that exist. Why wouldn't we do one of the most important goals that we have in our planning? As the five of us and make it a subcommittee to move it forward. It just. There's no reason in the world we shouldn't be of service and be effective.
Well said. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion and I hope the clerk takes careful notes here and everybody listens carefully. I would, I would like to make a motion to form a subcommittee. City Council. For West Side Development of the Millbrae Station area specific plan defined as the boundary between El Camino Real. And the Caltrain tracks. And also bound by Millbrae Avenue to the south and Victoria Avenue to the north. That shall not have the authority to recommend. A developer or a development proposal to the full council. And not preclude other council members. Communicating with interested developers. Is that?
I'll second.
Anybody willing to second that?
I second that, Mayor.
Okay, okay. So can we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay.
Sorry about that. You might have to watch the video again.
Yes, I I have most of it. I don't know that I can repeat it verbatim back to you, but I will.
Okay.
Do the best I can.
I wrote notes.
And yes, we will ensure that it is correctly captured. The roll call vote. Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Pappan.
Yes.
Councilmember Oliva.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schneider.
Mayor, you did a lovely job, but no.
Fair enough.
And Mayor Oliver.
Hi.
Okay, the motion to form a subcommittee of the city council for West Side of the MSASP with the boundaries being. Between El Camino Real and the Caltrain tracks and ordered by Millbrae Avenue to the south and Victoria, excuse me, to the north. And Victoria to the south. That shall not have.
Victoria to the north, Victoria to the north and Millbrae Avenue to the south, sorry.
That shall not have the authority to recommend a developer or development to the entire council. And to not preclude, and I I'm sorry, I lost you there, Mayor.
And to not preclude other council members from communicating. With interested developers or potential developers.
Passes by a vote of four to one with Councilmember Schneider dissenting.
Vice Mayor.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor, yes.
All right.
I worked really hard for that, you know?
Okay, so we have two council members thus far have expressed interest. I believe Councilman Lee has expressed interest and. Councilwoman Oliva has expressed interest. Councilwoman Pappan, I see your hands up.
Yeah, I'd like to express interest as well, if it's possible.
Okay, so three have expressed interest. Vice Mayor Schneider, are you interested?
After just voting no, that would be terribly, I'm not sure hypocrite is the word. I would. I can understand. No, my plate is actually pretty full right now. Go forth.
I'm interested as well. But I think.
Well, Mr. Mayor, maybe you should make appointments then.
Okay, you know what? I will withdraw my my interest because.
See, I would support your interest, Mayor. Mayor, I would feel better if you were one of the two.
Of other. I have plenty of other things that I'm. I have taking up my time right now. So I think I will withdraw my interest given the interest of three others. Okay.
I'm okay with you making a choice or. Whatever, pulling cards, it doesn't really matter. I think we're all.
I'm fine with pulling cards too. Or with our mayor.
You could tell us later. You don't have to make it up.
I mean, the appointments have to be made by the the full council though, right? Not just by the.
Well, no, I mean, this could be a plan about the mayor. This, 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 the thing is this protocol, I mean. All appointments are by the mayor and the subcommittees unless, you know, what are we changing our protocols now?
I don't think that's.
I think the mayor appointed and we agreed. Isn't that how it works?
That's where it was.
We usually batch them all at the beginning of the year.
The mayor makes the appointments and it's ratified by a majority of the council.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and. I will nominate Councilman Lee and Councilwoman Pappan to this subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
And Councilwoman, Vice Mayor Schneider, I heard you and I will abide by what you've said and I'm pretty sure that you will not be. Same treatment as as you were last time. I'm sorry that happened.
Thank you. That's the first time anybody has said anything to me in two and a half years since that started. I appreciate that.
Mayor, may I be an alternative, an alternative? May be an alternate to the, may be an alternate to the subcommittee?
I don't think we can do that because then I would create a quorum of the council, so. I'm sorry, but.
Well, if there's different, if there's different.
The subcommittee will change in six months.
Yes, it will. Five months, but who's counting?
All right. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to draw your attention. I do have public comment for this. I don't know if you want to. Do that now.
Yeah, well, let's let's hear the public comment, sure.
Okay, there are. Three items of public comments submitted, so I'll go ahead and start with the first one. And the first one is from Baron Soon. I'm a business property owner and longtime homeowner in Millbrae. I raised my family in this city. Millbrae is very important to me. I ask that the council approve the subcommittee to look at what can be done on the corner site where Peter's Cafe is next to the Bart Station. We need a great project on that site. First, we need to generate more tax money for Millbrae. We need more, we need money for projects that we want to get done. I.e. the community center. Second, we need jobs and money to help out, to help us out of this big downturn from COVID-19. And lastly, we need something on that site that can represent the city. It is the front gate of our city and we need a good project that says we are a great city. Please approve the subcommittee and see what we can do on the site. Thank you, Baron Soon. The second. Public comment. Was sent by John Wright on behalf of Eli Corey. And it states, statement from Eli Corey Consulting Principal to Sarah Regis and the Calvano Development Team. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers and staff, we are in strong support of the formation of a council Subcommittee to complement staff's efforts to usher in the communities and councils' development goals at the west side of Millbrae Station. We represent the development team that Mark Calvano has assembled to assist in the ongoing efforts to develop a project at the corner of Millbrae Avenue and El Camino known as TOD 3. We believe TOD 3 has the potential to be the best multimodal site in the Bay Area and deserves the highest attention and best resources of all parties, including the frequent and regular participation of council. The site presents a unique and irreplaceable opportunity for Millbrae to secure strong community benefits in the form of high-paying jobs, unprecedented City General Fund revenue generation to support community priorities and new retail services and amenities to serve residents. The purpose of the Subcommittee is to provide leadership in determining the manner in which TOD 3 can be developed to best support the Millbrae's objective, including council-stated goals for 100 El Camino of working with a developer that proposes the highest best use of the property and encouraging the development of the property as soon as possible, along with the process for determining how to achieve such development and with which parties it should work to do so. We believe that leadership from the Subcommittee is the path to restoring critical questions in the quickest and clearest manner, consistent with the goals of the council and the community. The establishment of a Subcommittee will be beneficial to all stakeholders who have an interest in TOD 3, including council, city staff, the community, potential developers, neighbors, and adjacent owners, as well as the many transit agencies. The Subcommittee can bring much-needed structure, communication, and predictability to the process, support the ability of all parties to work in concert with the city while providing a venue for identifying the best solutions, promote coordination, cooperation, transparency, and fairness between all interested parties, improve communication and supportive city-led approach while keeping all parties informed and operating within their proper lanes. We believe that developing TOD 3 as a whole, integrated unit will maximize the community and fiscal benefits and be most compatible with the superb intermodal plan. State-of-the-art urban planning for this site would be best achieved by combining the patchwork of parcels that currently exists. The establishment of the Subcommittee does not commit the city to any particular course or outcome with any particular party. It merely provides the best communication and structure to expedite the city's determination of the optimal approach to TOD 3 development in light of all the issues and stakeholders involved. We stand ready to work with Millbrae in any way possible to assist all parties in the realization of a world-class project at TOD 3. We strongly encourage the council members to create the Subcommittee." Okay, and then the final comment is from Marge Colapietro. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, I want to encourage you to establish a council Subcommittee and to appoint two councilpersons with knowledge and experience in the best use of land. Why is it that our neighboring cities, also faced with the pandemic, can get their proposed projects in front of their city councils and get approval so quickly? Amazing when I read in the Daily Journal, amazing when I read in the Daily Journal. Makes me ashamed that we have two proposed projects going back to 2017 stacked in limbo for one excuse or another. I was on the city council when we spent $1,125,000 for 100 El Camino together with the council's policies for the redevelopment of the parcel, including, quote, "The city will work with a developer that proposes the highest, best use of the property, and the city will encourage the development of the property as soon as possible," close quote. The use of the words "will" and "as" as soon as possible are clear, concise, and instructive. Those words mean get it done in a timely manner, not five years or more down the road. Is this going to happen to all future potential projects that come to our city? Are we, are we, you, going to be labeled as the worst city to do business with? Council, why do you think you will need the BART? You need to get the BART property back in order to begin the process? Please set up Subcommittee. You can at least review viable projects, bring them to the Planning Commission, who forwards their findings to you. Again, time is wasted. City Council makes decisions, sets timelines, then passes on the specific instructions to city manager. City Manager hires Project Manager for City. City Council and City Manager can then move forward with many important issues and challenges our city has. Please keep on moving. Please never forget, you are selected by the people and you should be for the people. Respectfully, Marge Colapietro, Mayor Emeritus, City of Millbrae." And that ends the public communication for these items.
Okay. Let's see, yes, Councilman Pappan?
Yeah, at this point in time, because I know it was an issue previously, I'd like to suggest that the Subcommittee and all the councilmembers actually keep thorough notes on their meetings with any developers so that we avoid any conflicts and that everybody is transparent. The Subcommittee will absolutely be reporting to the council, not making any recommendations. But I do think it's important that we know who's meeting with whom as a body and that that be declared in a public forum.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Pappan. Okay, so I made the motion to appoint Councilwoman Pappan and Councilman Lee to the Subcommittee. I believe there was a second from Councilwoman Oliva. We have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Pappan.
Yes.
Councilmember Oliva.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schneider.
Yes.
Mayor Oliver.
Hi.
The appointment of Councilmembers Lee and Pappan to the Subcommittee is unanimously approved.
And Mr. Mayor, I would just say one thing, and I know that corner is blighted. It's been blighted for years, it needs to be built out. But the great coach, John Wooden, had a saying, "Be quick, but don't rush." Be quick, but don't rush. And rushing something through that is not a quality development, that not, that brings this community up 10 steps. I just want to throw out there that staff is working hard. We're working hard to, to, to ensure quality, to take us to the next level and not sacrifice just for the sake of getting something built and rushing it. So we'll be quick, but it'll, the staff's point of view should be quality and, and the right type of development.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's now go to council comments and let's start with Councilman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, there was a general meeting of the A-BAG and they approved the bylaws and the budget. There was a lot of discussion on dues and a, it's a small, it's like maybe a small $2,000 per city or something like that. But there were a lot of objections because of the COVID crisis and the cities being, being in a financial crisis, which all cities will be in in the next six months or so. But the A-BAG, the Associate Bear Government provides more than, you know, you get 10 times more in, in benefits in terms of studies, planning, issue, direction of money, issuance of money and projects, insurance and so forth. So, sorry, hang on. And so, but it passed and also there's a discussion on RENA numbers at the Executive Board. And of course, they, they voted for using the A-BAG numbers, which, which were hired in the state finance board. But there were a lot of speakers who said that the numbers were still not enough. Unfortunately, there was just not enough. There wasn't a discussion of how much more was needed. But there obviously is a need for housing. There are a lot of people out there, growing families who doesn't have housing. So that's the other thing. I got appointed by the president to the Housing Board, the Subcommittee on the Associate Bear Governments. It's quite an honor and I have to be able to work on something that's so critical to the Bay Area. And I guess that's pretty much it, except the Lions Club's officer installations at 10 o'clock on Zoom this Saturday, if you want to, if you want to be a participant, just shoot me an email. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go to Councilwoman Oliva.
Thank you, Mayor. So since our last council meeting, I had the opportunity to, to attend the Zoom Heart Finance Board Meeting and also the SAL Board Meeting, both of which are wondering how they can recoup because obviously they all work off donations and events of which they accumulate their, their monies to contribute to what we all participate in. And for now, they're not asking anything from us other than Heart. Of course, we're a member of and we don't anticipate losing any membership. But the finances, the projects are pretty much at a, at a hold. As far as the RENA numbers go, we, you know, that's always something that we participate pretty heavily in, in Heart because they, they are the ones who contribute to whatever they can to keep the cities and the down payment subsidies and the developments going forward. And it's just something we're gonna have to take a deep breath with. With SAL, we have, we would have had that great event that we've all attended in Redwood City this week, and that was not, of course, allowable. And so that, that's gonna be something that we, in the, in the, in the near future, we're gonna see some of the programs that are gonna be eliminated. And hopefully, as a city, we'll be able to contribute like we usually do to an event that didn't exist. So maybe in a future agenda, I'll come forward with something with that. But those are, those are the two meetings that I attended since the last council meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilwoman Pappan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, congratulations to Councilmember Lee and his assent to the President of the Lions Club. Is that correct terminology? He's lying. Also, question, hopefully, we have a lot of illegal fireworks. I heard some go off just tonight. Not sure what the city's doing about that, but it does become a risk and it is very stressful on the, the local pets. So hopefully, everybody will be safe, but it's quite dangerous these days. Every night, they seem to be going off. And I was wondering if we could look into when we could, since we're social distancing and crowds are limited, maybe a movie's in the park again. If we could mark the ground as they do in San Francisco so that everybody keeps their six feet apart, that might be helpful to the community. And I would like to request the mayor and city manager that we, as a council, get together and coordinate our efforts with the High Speed Rail Authority. I don't know if that's a closed session or a public session. I will say that my meeting with the Blue Ribbon Transportation Committee, the first meeting, we have seconds, they've got several going forward here. But the biggest issue is public safety in the use of public transportation, whether it's masks or gloves or just even the drivers being kept safe. Very, very important issues as people are returning to work. I will say that BART in and of themselves have certain policies which are inconsistent with mask wearing. They still allow panhandling on the trains and they are not enforcing the masks because they have these ambassadors, but none of which are in San Mateo County. Nor, and they only have two police officers from Balboa to Millbrae. So the inconsistency in the services are concerning, which we are hoping to deal with through this process so we can keep everybody safe and try to get everybody back on public transportation. Very, very important. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned earlier, a big shout out to our recreation staff for all the work that they're doing in restoring our urban forest and also for the great job they did in preparing Central Park and, and the area around the Chet Cootie Room and all of the work they did for the unofficial, from the city's perspective, Black Lives Matter event. The park really looked great and recreation staff or park staff. I know you sometimes get criticized for weeds everywhere. Everything is looking really good and I appreciate that, or I'm sure we appreciate that. The, again, congratulations to incoming Lion President Wayne and a very big thank you and congratulations to outgoing President Rob Decoté. Like everybody who's in the leadership of community groups right now, it has been really tough. And Lion President Rob, as the vernacular goes, has done a really great job of making sure that we protect our older lions and we protect our young people as we continue to do, as the Lions continue to do projects. So thank you very much and to Lion, it, Lion President-elect, I'm not sure, Wayne. Good luck to you on a year and I'm, I'm there to help you as we figure out how to do Lion activities with social distancing. With that, the Millbrae Leos have chosen a new Board of Directors, still hoping to keep a space open for St. Dunston's representative once that's made. I'm bringing it up now because the Leos actually help so many community groups, but with shelter in place, that a lot of those probably aren't gonna happen. And the Leos have a request or an idea that they're thinking of that they might spend the school year 2021 concentrating on feeding people, meaning probably food drives, things to help second harvest in other food delivery groups. With that, I'm gonna show you something. For the first time, San Mateo County is having a disaster management plan, a mass, a disaster debris management plan. It's countywide. I attended a training last week by the USCPA and the Marines over a drill that they did in San Francisco. Mayor Oliver, it was done at the San Francisco EOC. Very interesting, depending on the disaster, different kinds of materials. Under the Emergency Services Council, last week, we created a Subcommittee to review this for coastside, north county, south county perspective. So it's myself for north county, Deborah Penrose for Hacklum Bay and Janet Borgans for Redwood City. And basically what this will lead to, I've mentioned this before, but for staff, this hopefully will open the door to contingency contracts. If you look at it in terms of the COVID environment, if all of the hospitals had contingency contracts and warehouses of masks, we would have been better prepared. Contingency contracts say, if you suddenly have all the fireplaces fall down in your city, we've got a contract with an inert recycler and they will take our materials at a price that we fix before a disaster hits. So this, to me, is really exciting stuff. It may not seem so exciting, but there'll be a meeting tomorrow to kind of bring this out. And I'm along with a bunch of county staffers leading this effort or working this effort for emergency services. So with that, oh, and one last thing, and Angela, I really would like this in the minutes. The Daily Journal did an article today about the Humane Society and in the article, they quote me as saying that Vice Mayor Ann Schneider said she would like to see a large disparity in pay for employees and, employees and executives. I've already contacted the reporter, he's already made a correction. I haven't seen the correction. That is not what I said. What I said is we should not see large disparities between executives and frontline staff. So if we could make sure that that is corrected, I am gonna carry that with me the rest of my life. Ann wants to see executives get more pay and that is not what I said. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I saw that as well. Figured you were misquoted there. Okay, all right. So last week, the city manager and I met with the High Speed Rail CEO, Brian Kelly. He finally did make it to Millbrae and did a site tour of, of the station and the area around Musi's development. Vince Musi was there as well and discussed his, his project and, and what has been approved and what he would like to do there. Mr. Kelly, it was pretty clear, he was not that aware of the issues in Millbrae and had fairly limited knowledge, but he did understand that it seems like both the city and High Speed Rail Agency have generally been talking over each other as opposed to listening. So he was, he, he did say that, you know, he would like to listen and, and hear how we could reach an agreement here, although his hands are somewhat tied by the schedule and the need to get the EIR out in the next 13 months so that they do not lose federal funding. So it's, it's not really clear how that would tie in with the city's or Mr. Musi's timeline for trying to get that development, get a shovel in the ground there. or Mr. Musey's timeline for trying to get that development, get a shovel on the ground there. There was some news with High Speed Rail. There was a good article yesterday in the Chronicle describing some of the issues that they are currently having with the state legislature. There was a bipartisan majority, 63 out of the 80 members of the state assembly voted to, voted, not a non-binding vote, but they demanded that High Speed Rail not award any of its contracts in the Central Valley until the legislature has approved funding. And I think partially because of that and because of some of the bad press that they've received, they have actually pulled the business plan from their board meeting that was going to be this Thursday, and it will be deferred until December. So from, from an article that I, I read.
So much for the rush.
Sorry?
So much for the rush.
Yeah, well, that's for the business plan, it's not for the EIR. The EIR is still going forward with this timeline. The draft EIR will be, I think, issued July 10th, and they plan to have it certified in about 13 months. Let's see, also, the Millbrae Parks and Rec Commission met last month for the first time in several months. There was a discussion of potential drive-in movies and possibly the site, the parking lot across from City Hall and by Millbrae Square as a potential site. Others that they're looking at, they're thinking maybe using the stage with the screen projected above the stage. So good to see that commission back and going, and it would be great to have those events this summer now that, now that it's allowed. And, and well, I guess drive-ins were already, already had been allowed, so great to see us do that. To the Library JPA Board met last week. There's a discussion about the board's budget and the potential funding impact from ERAF, the education augmentation fund, reserve augmentation fund, which comes in each year from the state from property taxes. There, as part of the state's proposal to close its budget, they had planned to take a lot of that funding back. So that could potentially impact the library budget when it comes back to us in September. But it's a relatively small part of the budget that's only used for one-time projects. Also, another business, I was nominated and elected as the new chair of the board. So that term will begin in July. Also, the Commute.org Board met last week. There was a discussion about the effect of telework and how that's going to impact, you know, public transit. Transit ridership is projected to be down for quite some time due to telework and due to people not wanting to be on, using mass transit, even as we recover from the pandemic. And there was also renewal of the shuttle contract for the next two years. And that aligns with the other funding partners, Caltrain and Samtrans, in terms of their shuttle services as well. They all use the same provider. And I think that's about all that I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just congratulations.
Councilman Lee?
Congratulations on your appointment.
Oh, thank you.
I think they're, they're very, made a wise choice.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we will adjourn and we will be back here on July, July 14. So thank you all and have a good evening. Good night.
Thank you.